Okay, six o'clock. Calling to the Select Board meeting for February 11th, 2025. Just want to make a few notices that this meeting is being broadcast by the Needham Channel, the town's YouTube channel and via Zoom, and is being recorded for publication in later viewing. In accordance with the open meeting law, if anyone else in attendance wishes to record the meeting, they're required to notify the chair first, so the chair may inform our other attendees. I have received notification from Peter in, okay, good. Peter's recording. But if there's anyone in attendance who wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at this time. First agenda item, we have public comment. I have, I think, four people on the list who want to make public comment. Anyone on Zoom?
No one on Zoom yet, Mr. Chair, and I would like to let someone go in their stead.
Fine. Greg Reiman?
Yeah, we'd like to let the restaurants go first, if that's okay?
That sounds delicious. Let's go. All right. All right. So, take a seat, please. And, and Mike, you're good, you're good. All right. So this is public comment. Your name and your address for the record, and then we give you three minutes to talk. You'll be timed. We give you three second heads up, but...
Okay, I'll go, I'll go as fast as I can.
Whatever you want.
No worries.
And, and we don't comment after.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, you understand. All right, so your name?
Yeah, so I'm Steve Valante, 7:45 Central Ave in Needham, Mass.
I'm Hedy Jarris, 320 Chestnut Street, Needham.
Yeah, so I'm from Valante Farms. I wrote in a comment to you guys as the Select Board earlier today, and I talked to Greg as well. We discussed last year ourselves the Chamber Restaurants and among a couple of different of the fast casual restaurants in Needham, among ourselves and with the folks from Green Needham, Kathy and Rob, about the proposed water bottle ban, which was proposed last year, along with the black plastics ban and a couple of other things, and skip that stuff. And we came to a pretty good point, I think, last year with that, where I think we were all really on board with skip that stuff. Because I think that's a, that's a win-win for everybody.
Yeah.
As far as the lessening the amount of, you know, unnecessary waste, it's a beneficial financial move for all the restaurants, and it's worked out really well in Newton as well, which it believed it a couple of years ago or last year. And we've seen a lot of our restaurants in this group, in the, the Chamber Group as well, that they've been very supportive of that, and it's worked out really well for them over there. The sticking point, I think, for us still is the, the water bottle issue. And I think there's a couple of different issues that we have with it, at least, I know from my own, and I'll just read through a couple of my points, and then Heidi, you can say some stuff too. But I guess the, the first thing that jumped to my mind when I was looking at that is like banning a single item, sort of at a piecemeal basis on a town-by-town situation, reminds me a little bit of back when the town was dry town, and people would just go to buy their liquor or beer, wine, or whatever at, you know, you just cross the border and go right into Newton. So all that business is just going to the next town anyway. Like, you know, if, if you go to Dedham, you go to BJ's and pick up whatever you want for plastic, plastic water bottles, or, I don't see a whole lot of difference between that and, you know, what's being proposed here. The, the biggest issue, I think, is the, the cost issue and the potential hit as far as profit margins go. By Green Needham's own estimates, last year, they did an informal survey and kind of collected some data from places that were selling them, and the difference that would, that would affect the various businesses, and I think the average from like the five or six that they had on there as of last year, they're saying, you know, like a $2,000 hit essentially to the, to the profit, to the bottom line. And that's a, that's a lot for any of these fast casual, fast casual places to absorb. Yeah, so it's, it's just, that's a major concern, I know, for all the, all the restaurants and all the businesses that do sell these. I think leaving that up as a choice for the consumers instead of just banning them outright makes a lot more sense. I mean, I think, I mean, again, I'm not, I don't smoke, but I don't think that we need to ban cigarettes. I think that should be a choice. I think it's a, that sort of thing, and that's my own personal take on it as far as that goes. But from a business standpoint, I know it's tough for a lot of people, so.
Two moments, we're gonna not combine.
So I'm Hedy, I'm the owner of Sweet Tomatoes Pizza. And when I heard about banning water bottles, I was definitely shocked by it because my, my first thought was, what's the difference of somebody buying a bottle of water to a bottle of Coke, a bottle of Diet Coke, or whatever that may be? And I'm, I'm pretty sure that Coca-Cola products, Pepsi products, whatever they may be, is not going to be, or is not looking to be banned in Needham, but just water bottles. And I learned a lot with being on the Chamber and listening to, you know, how Needham feels and, but as a small business owner, the bottom line means everything. And water is, you know, people love water bottles. They, they want water, and it should be up to the consumer as to what they are putting in their body. You know, there's McDonald's right next to us. If somebody chooses to go there every single day for breakfast, lunch, and dinner, that's their choice. If somebody comes into my pizza restaurant and wants a bottle of water, I should be able to have the choice to be able to sell them that bottle of water. There's, you know, and again, I, I'm being in Needham for almost six, for 16, 17 years in business, and having two stores in, in Newton Center and in West Newton. I feel like these towns and cities, we hear a lot about supporting small businesses and making your towns and cities vibrant, and I think that this would be disastrous if you were to ban water bottles. And I think that, again, it would have to be up to the consumer. And I don't know what the difference would be to a bottle of Coke, to a bottle of Volans.
Diabetes, I think.
Right. Diet. Well, yeah, whatever.
Whatever that gives you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're great pizza. Good work. Thank you very much. All right. Okay. Next up, Barry Pollak.
Does Greg still want to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry, Greg, Barry, hold on one second.
Thank you.
Greg Reiman, good to see you. Good evening.
Props.
You know, you know the drill, three minutes, name and address.
My name is Greg Reiman, I'm president of Charles River Regional Chamber. So I wanted to, there, I know there's three docket items, three others before you need for consideration, so I wanted to talk quickly about two of them. As Steve mentioned, skip the stuff, we love it, it's good for restaurants, it's good for the environment, we're entirely in favor of it. The only one thing we ask is that there be enough time for restaurants to get used to it, there's a learning curve for restaurants for employees, whoever, once it's in place, as long as the person enforcing it is tolerant for the learning curve, we're good with it. Second one, banning black, black plastic. We all know that those large containers, you might get your salad in or your takeout dinner, if it's black, it's not recyclable. If it's white plastic or clear plastic, it is recyclable. The difference, however, is these containers, when they're this small, whether it's white or black, neither one is recyclable, neither one fits into the recycling machine. So we ask that these be exempt from the black plastic ordinance, so anything four ounces or smaller, that's what Newton agreed to do. Since neither one is recyclable, let's make them both available. There's a supply chain issue and cost for restaurants here. So we ask that the ordinance, that you consider changing that to an exemption of four ounces or smaller on that one. Which brings us to the bottle ban. So we've been through this before, and I know you've received a few letters, you've heard from a couple of people about explaining the economics. Bottled water is very important to a small business's bottom line. Canned water can cost restaurants five or more times as much as plastic. Bottled, boxed water is even worse for the environment because it's not recyclable at all. Last year, the Board of Health agreed and said that taking away a healthy beverage would lead some consumers to make less healthy choices. They did not support the item when it came up last year. But here's five branded reasons beyond the economics why you shouldn't do this now, because it's a terrible thing to do for business restaurants. Number one, tariffs. The possibility of tariffs causing food prices to skyrocket is driving our restaurant owners crazy. They don't know what to plan, how to plan, what it's going to be. They've been struggling with inflation, egg prices, the, there's a restaurant just across the street, took him three days to get his egg supply in from his supplier, there was this, so the shortage of that, tariffs is impending now, it's a really bad time to add an additional stress to restaurants. But here's the next stress, more tariffs. Tariffs on a lunatic, which would be the way that they make cans for canned water, is very likely to drive those prices of canned water up. There's uncertainty about that, but it's a big concern. So what's going to happen there? Immigration crackdowns. What does this have to do with water bottles? I'll tell you in a second. I don't know of a restaurant owner or their employees who isn't worried about an immigration crackdown and what it means, how mass deportation deportations could affect employees there or the families of employees there, even people who are legally able to be here, you just don't know what's going to happen. It's such a stressful time in restaurants, adding another thing to it, it's just really tough right now. New tax assessments in town. We know we've, our businesses just got hit with some really big tax increases, many of them. It's a really bad time to add an additional cost to their ledger right now with those tax increases. Finally, the rollback of all kinds of environmental benefits. Let's be honest, banning water bottles in Needham is not going to change the world at a time when we're rolling down nationally all kinds of environmental standards and things. It's just not the right time to put this burden on the backs of our small business owners. Thank you very much. Can I have these, everyone? They're either recyclable.
That's all right. Props, everyone. All right, next up, Barry Pollak. All right, Barry, you know the drill. Welcome. Name, your address, in three minutes.
Chair team, members of the Select Board, I'm Barry Pollak, I live at 15 Pandolph Lane. I noticed that on the agenda today, one of the items is the future goals of the Select Board, and I'm here to discuss one item that I think is extremely important, which is working towards healing the division that, and the divisiveness that occurred during the MBTA Communities Act campaigns. I have an answer to a question that was posed during the public comment period right after the vote, and then I have a couple of requests. A question that was asked when a number of people came up that were interested in a special town meeting to move this along was, why is there so much distrust? This was a transparent process, there were a number of public meetings, why is it that people were so pushing? I've probably, rare that you have a long line of people pushing for a special town meeting. I just don't think it's anyone's usual priority. On January 15th, the day after the election, The Boston Globe reported that Heidi Frey Ellis, Select Board member who helped craft this zoning, said town officials would work toward a plan with broad support among residents. So while many people had the assumption, I think it was more than an assumption, the understanding, that the base plan was what was going to go forward, and ultimately that's what was reached, the quote was, "While the outcome was not what we hoped for, we look forward to working together as a town to formulate a new plan for multifamily housing that will appeal broadly to residents and address Needham's long-term housing needs." That did shock people after all the stress, the burdens of the election that I think pitted neighbor against neighbor and was one of the most costly in terms of, maybe not financial costs, but in terms of the relationships among people in this town. So that's the answer to the question about why there was so much distrust. I have two requests going forward, and I think I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of people I know, and I have friends who are both yes voters and friends who are both no voters, and there may have been stressful times, but people get by it. I think there's an opportunity to learn from this. It's the first time in Needham's modern history that there was a successful referendum. That doesn't happen for no reason. That happens, I, I think the word transparency was being used, and that's not quite right. It's, it's listening that needs to be a real focus, active listening. Here's the specific ask. Often, boards, which sometimes have overlapping members, boards and committees, reach a decision and then allow people in to speak for two or three minutes. Not a lot of interaction and not a lot of opportunity for people to have input. I would suggest having interactive forums within these important issues more often. My second ask, three members of this board at the first meeting after the vote committed to oppose any amendment that a town meeting member might seek. As member Levy suggested, five seconds, as member Levy suggested, is in the interests of community, that I think he joined a unanimous vote not to push for a special town meeting, I would suggest that this board unanimously oppose any amendment from the floor otherwise before town meeting. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, next up is Jeff Pollak, Coca-Cola Beverages Northeast. Jeff, feed out the drill. Your name, your address, three minutes.
17 Freedom Way, Lowell, Mass.
Okay, welcome.
Welcome, thank you for having me tonight. So as I said, my name is Jeff Pollak, and I'm the Director of Operations over at Coca-Cola in Needham. I've been with Coca-Cola for about 38 years, and Needham has been in, Coca-Cola has been in Needham for decades, and we employ about 400 Massachusetts residents. So in addition to, to employ, the employing of all the, all those employees, we have also invested a lot of money into the facility. Over the past three years, we've invested approximately $73 million to extensively upgrade and modernize our, our facility. So we're proud to be a contributor to Needham's economy, but we're also active and involved in the community. We support such organizations such as the Boston Red Sox Foundation, Boston Center for Youth and Families, Special Olympics Massachusetts, Save the Harbor, Save the Bay, and the Base. So in addition to being one of the top property tax contributors in Needham, we each, for each direct Coca-Cola system job, additional jobs are supported in the value chain through our local customers, like grocery stores and restaurants. So the reason I'm here today is to express opposition to the proposed articles that would ban plastic beverage bottles in Needham. That ban would have far-reaching negative impacts. It would threaten good jobs such as the ones that we provide at Coke Northeast and hurt local businesses, who would, they would face a significant revenue loss because their customers would take their business to nearby towns. So by eliminating an entire category of options, you're not only forcing commuters to go to other towns, but they're going to take their entire shopping list with them. So we believe there's better solutions than banning one of the most valuable and easily recyclable items in the recycling stream. Coke Northeast, along with the rest of the non-alcoholic beverage industry, is committed to the sustainability of supporting a circular economy for our containers. Our bottles are 100% recyclable, including the caps, and we want our bottles back so that we can make new ones. In fact, our 20-ounce portfolio, including our iconic brands such as Coca-Cola Diet Coke and Coca-Cola Zero, are now available in bottles that are made from 100% recycled plastic, which is called our pet. Beyond using recycled materials on our packaging, we also use less raw materials than we used to, and we produce our bottles with less per unit, which we estimate will save 3.6 million pounds of plastic annually. So for these reasons, before making a decision with such far-reaching consequences, I strongly recommend engaging with all relevant stakeholders, including local businesses, residents, the DPW, nonprofits, and nonprofits. So let's work together to find solutions that protect our environment without harming our local economy, impacting the local workforce, and limiting consumer choice. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Thanks again for your time and consideration. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you. Thanks. All right, and next up is Frank. Frank, come on up. All right, Frank, welcome. Take a seat. Your name and your address, please, in three minutes.
Of course.
All right.
My name is Frank, 89 Linden Street, in Boston, Mass.
Thank you, that's great.
D-I-N-G, Denim Street, Denim, thank you. Well, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak up tonight. I wanted to bring attention to a critical issue that threatened both global human rights and the freedom we hold in the USA. The Chinese Communist Party ongoing persecution of Falun Gong, and it's going, growing the influence deep inside the US is a threat that extends beyond the Chinese borders. Falun Gong, also known as Falun Gong, is a peaceful spiritual practice focused on meditation and principle truthfulness, compassion, tolerance. In 1990, it gained millions, millions of practitioners in China. But in 1999, the previous leader, Jiang Zemin, he launched a brutal crackdown, labeling as a threat to his authority and power. Since then, the CCP's spread the disinformation worldwide just by, just by the persecution which caused serious human rights violation, including the torture, forced labor, and even organ harvesting. Where the CCP moved the persecution underground to attract a global investment, to maintain agreement with the government worldwide to suppress the, the criticism of their human rights record in exchange for business deals, especially after joining the WTO in 2001. The CCP influenced not just in China, they also have deployed agents to monitor and silence the Falun Gong practitioners in the US, spread the disinformation and intimidate the supporters. Shameful Performing Arts is actually an American-based nonprofit organization currently is the only soft strength in the US that can highlight the Chinese Communist Party's atrocities. Also has been a target of those similar campaigns. The CCP's been using the influence to manipulate public opinion and undermine our freedoms in the US. The direct interference in the US violates core American values of freedom of speech and the religious liberty by trying to control the narrative about Falun Gong and the CCP's seeks to express religious freedom and free express, which are fundamental to our democracy. Left unchecked, those efforts threaten the fabric of our society. The final call, I urge the council to recognize the violent, the significance and alarming influence of the CCP's within our own borders, the campaigns of repression extended beyond China and including spying, disinformation campaign, and direct interference in our democratic process. Those actions are not just only targeting Falun Gong practitioners, but also part of the border strategy to silence dissent, manipulate public opinions, and control narrative here in the US. So I ask the council to raise awareness in our community about this covert operation so we can better understand how they undermine the freedom and the values. So let's stand together to defend, in defining our democracy and protecting our rights to free speak, believe, and to live without foreign interference. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you very much.
And those documents that I prepared about the issue through all of those years, I may give you better understanding about what is actually happening, not just in China, but also deep inside the USA, you know.
Okay.
You know.
Thank you.
So thank you so much, appreciate it.
Next up, Miles, anyone else? Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak? Okay. Next up is a public hearing. Verizon Cable License Acertainment. For trivia in, for the NEF trivia B, this is an acertainment hearing, it's required by federal law. You'll never hear this again, except in this case. So can we have Miles Tucker, Sports Service Manager, please? And, hold on, Miles. Okay. So this is a public hearing of Verizon's cable license renewal, and is part of the cable license renewal process to ascertain the community cable-related needs. Verizon's cable license expires on July 16th, 2027. Federal and state law require holding public acertainment proceedings, including this hearing. Notice was posted in the Needham Hometown Weekly on January 23rd and 30th, as well as in the Town E newsletter. Cards of illegal advertisement are in the agenda packet. We will provide interested members of the public and other interested persons the opportunity to provide input about what cable-related needs are important to Needham and about how Verizon has performed under its existing license. Before proceeding, public comment, I would like to thank the Needham Channel and Verizon for their participation in the ongoing license renewal proceedings. In this hearing, the board will hear comments on all Verizon cable-related matters, to include customer service, license administration, local studio needs, community programming, PEG access, and Verizon support for the Needham Channel. Comments should be limited to three minutes if anyone wishes to speak. Otherwise, they can provide them online. Okay. You wish us?
So I can be here for any questions that the board might have, but I know we have a few folks here to provide public comment on this topic, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Who wishes to speak? All right.
Three minutes.
Let's see. Now, we're allowed to do six. Hey. Good evening. Good evening. All right. So, Michael Grayce, 384 Webster Street, and President of the Needham Channel.
And I'm Mark Mandell. Actually, most resident, but I'm here in my capacity as the Executive Director of the Needham Channel.
All right. Okay. So, acertainment.
Thank you. So we have been part of this process for many years, each time there's a license that comes up. So we just want to come forward and just briefly mention, obviously, the cable providers sound are very important to us, they, as part of their obligations for using the town's ways, provide funding for PEG access, and that's been important, important for all of us, and we have generally had a good relationship with all three providers. I've been part of, before the town took it over, I was part of this process for multiple negotiations. Our hope is that the process will be smooth, not with a lot of difficulties. Mark can talk a little bit about working with Verizon operationally, they have been a good partner. My, I think my biggest concern is, as I look forward, is ensuring that our cable providers are really looking to provide the services that our residents want, that keep them customers, because basically, we benefit when they benefit, as long as those are cable-related services. I do note, and I don't, and this is their business, so I don't, now the details, I will note that over the last five years, Verizon's revenues, you know, to us, which means their revenues on cable services have declined about 20%, where Comcast have stayed the same. So that may be a mix of services or how they provide their services, but we would be eager to see all our providers continue to provide the kind of services that our community wants. There's a lot of discussion about cord cutting, but, you know, frankly, as you see, Comcast has managed to keep the services, and, and as we all know, cord cutting often means you spend a lot of money for a lot of other services that you lose track of. So I think it's a, it's kind of a mixed bag on that. But, so we, we certainly hope that Verizon will have the kind of business and continue to invest in Needham so that we can continue to provide the services that we provide. And Mark, you might want to talk just operationally, they've been a great partner to us.
Sure. Yeah, which, exactly as Michael said, they have been a great partner for us. You know, it's sometimes a little bit difficult in the odd situation where there is a problem that needs to be addressed to find the right person to talk to, but once you do find that right person, they're usually very responsive and they're very accommodating to the needs that we express. And then just to echo Michael's comments, as we go through the negotiation process, it's important to really have them maintain the level of support that they have shown us over the course of the years, both in terms of operational capital and in terms of capital equipment as well. As we move on forward, if there is any opportunity that we have to provide support to, we're here for that, and look forward to that opportunity, and also look forward to a chance to speak with you a little bit more about our services, what we offer at some time in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Anyone on the board? Thoughts, comments?
I have three questions. So the PEG fees, are those passed on to customers?
Five percent gross revenues in Verizon's license.
So, so does Verizon absorb that cost, or does the customer absorb that?
Their customers.
Customers.
Michael.
Yes. Okay.
Mike, come up.
Legally, they are allowed to pass through a certain portion of that cost to the subscriber, but largely it is held by them.
Okay. Thank you.
Next.
Other two questions. Is this just for cable? So I, I know they also do FIOs, that's fiber optic. So is that not included, or is it included?
So the cable operational revenues are what come toward us. We do not get any of their revenues for the operating FIOs or broadband services.
But the license is just cable?
Correct.
Third question, what about poles? Because I know that they own the poles in Needham. Do they use those poles for cable service? Good question.
The poles, yeah, everybody uses the poles, they're, all the cables, and the public utilities are on the poles, and there's, and not, no longer fire, but... And no longer fire, but they're all on there.
Including their competitor.
Yeah.
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 But we've also, we've talked a lot about poles, and in particular, I'm thinking about like the double poles? Like, is this part, can this be part of the negotiation to talk about how poles are maintained?
Didn't the state just change regulations about double poles?
Did. I don't know if this is a permissive subject for the license. We can look at it.
I think it's a little bit tail wagging the dog that these revenues are separate from the voice revenues, which are more universal, but.
Can I ask about the phrase that you just used, the permissive subject for the licensing? I guess, in thinking about this and understanding that this may not be, you know, fair game, I guess, in looking at a license, I would think that there, you'd want to assess the performance of the license holder, but then also to see if there were some needs, town needs, that were maybe not being filled. As I see it, we have a really big problem with getting the word out, town communication. And I'm wondering if, you know, is there something that we could change about our relationship with Verizon to increase sort of public access to information? Is there anything that is, like, is that something that we can negotiate for?
So I think inherently, they are paying the fees so that we have the Needham Channel, so that the Needham Channel can provide access for free to the residents. Well, sorry, for the residents who have cable.
Yes. I hear that. But there's nothing additional that we could use as a... I don't know. We are constantly talking about how we're not reaching everyone. And I think it's fair to say that Verizon has probably a wider viewership or user base than the Needham Channel. So I guess I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity for growth here.
We can get back to you on that. I think the very strange fact is that municipal governments have the right to enter into these license agreements just for cable, and the vast majority of the business of these entities is not cable television anymore.
Yes.
And we're like, we can't talk, we can't negotiate over rates, we can't negotiate over programming, we can't have anything to do with data. So we can get back to you exactly if there's anything there.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if, there may not be. But if there is, this seems to be a problem that we need to start thinking more broadly about how to approach. So I don't know if there is, but it'd be great to look into.
I hear.
Anyone else? Anyone else in the room? Anyone else on Zoom?
Okay. I think public comments open for another week, I must.
Until then, then the next select board meeting, at which point the acertainment hearing, we would recommend that the board close it at the next meeting.
Yeah, so written comments will be accepted at selectboard@needhamma.gov. Perfect. February 25th. All right. Miles, thank you very much. So we'll keep this open till the 25th. All right. Next up, public hearing, EverSource grant of location, Windsor Road, Joanne Colander, EverSource representative. Miles, do we have Joanne?
Yes, Joanne is here and she brings her.
Hey, Joanne.
Hello, Joanne.
So EverSource is seeking a grant of location to install approximately 46 feet of conduit into Windsor Road, and this is to provide a new service, underground service to the new home at 111 Windsor Road. Thank you.
All right, great. Kate, is everything in order?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Does anyone on the board have a question, comment or concern? All right, this is a public hearing, so does anyone have any comments or want to say anything? Okay. I'm just gonna have a question. This is at, the house is at 111 Windsor, right?
That is what I'm told, yes.
Okay. And the supporting picture, I think that's from Stratford Road.
That would be from engineering, not from EverSource.
Okay. Okay. The house looks nice, but I don't think so.
I think it's very close to Stratford.
Yeah, it's across the street. So, okay, but on the draft, the maps, the plot plans and everything seems to be in order. So we're crossing the street, Windsor Road, onto 111 Windsor. Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that the select board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install 46 feet of conduit in Windsor Road.
Second.
Further discussion? Anything? All right, let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We have the grant to locations unanimous. Thank you, Joanne.
Have a good evening.
You too. All right. Next up, we have a public hearing, application for a new all alcohol license, North Hill Needham Incorporated, doing business as North Hill. And this is a continuation of a public hearing initiated on January 28th, 2025. Thomas Willer, Steve, Brianna Tucker.
Yes.
Are you going to be the proposed manager of record?
Yes.
In your name?
My name is Bethany Merson.
Give me my introductions.
Yeah. All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the board. It's nice to be before you again tonight. As the chair said, my name is Tom Miller from McDermott Quothie Mill and Hanley, here on behalf of North Hill. I'm joined by Brianna, the proposed manager of record, and Bethany, the director of operations from North Hill. As you said, we're here for an application for a new continuing care retirement community license under section 12 of 138. As I'm sure you all know, North Hill is a retirement community in Needham. It's been here since 1984. The mission is to enhance their residents, to enhance the lives of their residents by providing high-quality, innovative and personalized services. Part of the way they do that is by providing cultural enrichment and intellectual stimulation. To that end, they have added to their facilities a large, not a large, but a theater and lounge space to provide programming and entertainment and engagement for their, members of their community and those guests to add to their engagement. As part of that, and the reason we're here before you tonight, they're applying to add alcohol service to that space for those times and for, to create a space, welcoming space for their residents on campus to go socialize and enjoy the benefits of those interactions. They're also applying to add it to the dining facilities to, for everyday meals for those who want to have a glass of wine with dinner, beer with dinner, what have you. As many people want to do, and now that will allow them to do it on campus as opposed to head it out to the community. As you, I'm sure, have seen from the application, part of the application does in that lounge area include a self-service tap wall. That tap wall is similar to those found throughout the Commonwealth. It is not, while it may be new to the town, it is not something that is new in the Commonwealth. And we have worked with them to provide, to generate policies and procedures that ensure that that is operated safely and in a manner that meets with the regulations, both of the ABCC and the town. You know, in general, just briefly, those policies and procedures include, it will be monitored continuously when in operation. There will be somebody who is tip certified who will monitor the wall during that time to ensure safe operation. The wall will also, it's only activated by an RFID card unique to each user, and each user will be checked prior to issuance. So, you know, you're not going to get a card if you're 15, more or less, if you're there visiting your grandparents. And so.
You never want to leave.
Well, each RFID card will only pour up to two drinks a day. So, you know, just to make sure that there's no over-service beyond that, which is, you know, monitoring people who come down to use it. And one benefit to having that staff member monitor it during any time it's in operation is they're able to assess each person as they use it. The benefit of that is, in some ways, it actually is a more comprehensive test than somebody walking up to a bar and ordering, because they have to walk up, they have to utilize the RFID card, they have to utilize, make a selection, pour, so they're assessed during that whole process. I've worked with other clients who have used this, and they have found that it is easier to identify somebody who may not be able to continue to drink, because it takes more coordination to do that than just point to a bottle of beer and get another bottle of beer. That being said, that is in a different environment than North Hill is providing, but it does lend itself to the same thing of a more robust and ongoing assessment of people as they continue to utilize it. It will also, with a staff member present, if your grandkid does happen to get their hands on a card, they will assess them. It's like, that person clearly cannot use it. So, and they are empowered to step in and prevent somebody from pouring themselves a drink during that time. You know, I kind of focused heavily on that, but because I believe it is a novel concept in Needham, and I wanted the board to be aware of the policies and procedures and that end. They have been operating these under section 14 licenses for the last couple of months without incident. They've honed their ability to operate it well and successfully with no issues. So, you know, this is not something that they will be, will be new to them once, once the process, once, if the board sees fit to grant the license. So this is something they're familiar with. As I said, we're also proposing to add it to the dining hall service, as I said, for people who, while on campus, you know, instead of having to go out to, you know, if they want a glass of wine with dinner, they can do it every night, or they can do it on any night while there. So, you know, Brianna is here with me. She has been with North Hill for more than two and a half years, has been a director of dining for almost a decade in multiple other locations. She is experienced in the operations of these type of facilities, both with and without alcohol. She understands these responsibilities, and she does meet the requirements for a manager of record under the Commonwealth, as well as being tips trained and meet the requirements under the town. Overall, we'd be, you know, I could keep going on, but you all have a bunch to do. So we thank you for hearing this tonight. Would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Sure. Thank you very much. Questions? Comments?
Can I ask a question?
That's why we're here.
The, it sounded like you were talking about sort of opening a little bar.
The lounge area is seen in the floor plan, does have a bar. It is adjacent to the theater area. It is, it's a more relaxed kind of bar area, but it doesn't, it's not, you know, you're not, I can't think of something in town that has, you know, you're not walking into a bar, but it does have a bar area.
Primarily an intermission lounge. It's across from our auditorium, so it's used for intermission breaks before and after a function.
Okay. So I think typically when we entertain that sort of setup, there's usually a component, a food component that goes with it?
Food is available here.
Food is available.
Yeah, this is immediately adjacent to the dining area. It is a slightly limited venue, but it is, their food menu from their kitchen and cafes is available to people when the space is open. So there is, there is food service when it is open and operating. I apologize and neglected to say that.
Oh, that's fine. What are the hours of this area?
So we propose 11 to 11, just to give them the flexibility to operate when events are Events no later than 11:00 PM. So that kind of depends on its programming.
Is, would anyone have access to self-service tap who wouldn't generally be served by a person? So I'm thinking, I mean, in particular, I know that you have memory care facilities. If there were any concerns about people being served, is there an interaction there?
So, yes, yes and no. So no, people who have, who are not able to consume, should not be consuming alcohol, should not be using the tap wall. That's why it's monitored. That's why people are assessed every time they walk up, whether it is somebody who has memory issues, intoxication issues, or age issues. The staff is trained to make those decisions and intervene when necessary. So, you know, yes and no to.
We have multiple levels of care at North Hill, and this is in the independent living side of campus.
So it doesn't make care of people, unless they break out.
There's also multiple levels of protection. There's gates that come down, so it's not accessible. You can't accidentally wander up to it and stick your card in, not knowing, and alcohol will not come out. There's gates that are locked if it's not being monitored.
And then I noticed that educational, what is it, schools and churches? I mean, I know Babson's nearby. Are there other schools and churches nearby?
Well, Babson's also technically the property owner, but no, there are no, not within 500 feet, I'm not sure.
I would say Babson, and then Charles River Center, Mike.
And Babson doesn't qualify under the statute anyway, but yes. I don't think there's anything even close. I don't think anybody was included in our notices.
But even more than that, I mean, if there were somebody from Babson, they'd have to come into the main desk first, be registered as a guest.
Yes.
I mean, it's a, it's a whole thing just to enter.
Yes.
Explain the tap wall. Beer, wine? What do we, it's just beer, right?
No, it can be the, well, depending on how you choose to, you know, I'll let them specifically talk about what they're planning on putting on it, but a tap wall can be whatever you want, from pre-mixed cocktails to beer. So it really depends on what you want to provide. I believe it is just beer and wine here, but I'm.
There's a spirit.
Okay. Okay. Yep, so, you know, and the card and the system is smart enough to know the difference, so it's not just going to pour 12 ounces of whatever you choose.
Okay.
It will pour a, the measured amount per drink, so what a drink is defined.
Okay. So like a curate.
Yes and no. The curate you choose, here, the system chooses for you. It says, oh, you're pouring wine, you get six ounces. You're pouring beer, you get 12 ounces. You're pouring a cocktail. It's four. I'm, it depends on the potency of that for the pour, but in general, that's what the tap wall does.
Okay. You're having wine service for dinner today. What did you do before? I mean, was that, were you dry up there?
We typically have, sometimes residents, obviously they have apartments there.
Okay.
So they, many times they'll cook meals in their apartments, they would have a glass of wine there.
But the dining hall?
But we're seeking to have the ability to use it in the dining venues.
Oh, God bless. Okay.
And that's why we only are licensing these specific areas, you know, that way there's no conflict with residents having alcohol in their rooms. Technically, this is a section 12 license, and residents technically wouldn't be able to bring alcohol, you know, outside in. So we're limiting our ask for that reason.
Okay. Manager of record. How you got a card, people? Do we, I mean, I mean, does it, like, anyone under 70?
Yeah, so the community requirements to be a resident is to be at least 65. So we have some foolproof. To be, to be a resident, you have, there's some minimum qualifications, along with the tip certification, all of the people that will be serving alcohol, that's part of kind of that training, to know when to card, who to card, what the signs are. Anyone that looks under 30 will be carded. So if for some reason a resident may look younger, if they could be carded.
That's a lot of work, huh?
Same with their guests, you know, the guests will have access as well, and, you know, they, any guest who doesn't look like they could be a resident will be carded.
So when you card guests, will you be using a scanner?
Yes. Yep.
That's the way to answer.
Yes.
The whole thing with guests is kind of interesting. So if your RFID card permits you to have up to two drinks a day, right? How do they, how do you handle guests?
The cards will work the same way. So you only are, you have to see a part of someone that is tip certified to obtain a card. So at that point, there is a stop where you would be IDed. The card, when you're, the cards are, you can load as many dollar amounts as you want. You can put $100 on a card. Just because you have $100 doesn't mean that you can use it all, because it'll stop you at two legal drinks per day for 24 hours.
So a guest would obtain their own card, essentially?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Interesting.
Yeah, go ahead. What would prevent people from passing a card to someone else, to a guest, for instance? A resident passing a card to a guest?
They could do that, but that, you know, that was, that's why the wall is monitored, to make sure that that guest is of legal drinking age, of, you know, of a state in which they could, you know, invite alcohol. So, you know. So, you know, grandpa can't give it to his grandkids, say, go get a drink for me down the hall, you know? They, they would not be allowed to pour a drink.
And I know you've had many one-day licenses. Are you, are the operations under this new license any different from the one-day ones that you've had?
No.
So, you've had the pour, the wall already existed?
Yeah, the, the security procedures that laid out have been in operation here for two-plus months now.
Okay. So, this is just making it permanent?
Yep.
Okay.
So, that way, the staff doesn't get sick of continuation one days every time they need them. No, I mean, Miles. We're saving Miles ahead of it.
We're running out of one days.
That too.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I did have one last question. So, you said it's from 11 to 11. Is that going to be every single day? Or you also mentioned events, so it's a little unclear.
So, we've applied for the full window to allow them to operate the intermission lounge and, you know, at any time during that period, but that also allows them to operate, you know, during any food service, or, you know, if they're doing an Easter brunch, that will allow them to provide, you know, alcohol for any events like that, but also at a typical lunch or dinner service as well. So, this covers the dining hall as well, so during normal dining operations, it allows them to serve during that time, too.
But then, what, you're not planning to do 11 to 11 every day. You're planning to do mealtimes plus intermissions.
Yes, yeah, the bar and the tap wall will not be open. Like, they're not going, every, seven days a week, walk down, unlock it.
Yeah.
Here we are.
I just want to make a note for the benefit of my colleagues, that would be a normal practice. We usually see hours come in on a license that set essentially the maximum operating window, and many of our vendors in town operate fewer hours than that on a regular basis. So, yeah.
So, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak?
Yes.
Come on up. You got to name and address, please.
Hi. So, I'm Mark Muskin. I live at 860 Central Avenue, right across the street from 865. I appreciate you giving all the information. I guess I'm here from a safety perspective. Few years ago, we had an incident at our house, and I'm going to get emotional, but it was very hard. And I'm here strictly from a perspective of safety, and for the residents, and for people even on Central Avenue, walking, driving. So, it's more that this license isn't being obtained to, you know, have free will to access even more liquor and the safety for the residents up at North Hill and elsewhere. So, I know there's a two-drink limit on the tap wall. What about in the dining facility? What would be the limit of alcohol?
Our proposal is just one drink to be included in the meal. So, they have, the residents have a meal charge. It's not à la carte. They can't order one of these, one of these, and appetizer, and as many drinks as they want. It's one charge for $18, so it would be limited at one in the dining venues. So, they could have a glass of beer or a glass of wine with dinner.
And one benefit to this is for those who want a drink with dinner, they don't have to leave campus, go somewhere, have a drink with dinner, or go somewhere and socialize, and then drive back. It is entirely on campus, no car needed, no travel needed. So, it, in that regard, it does give people an option without having to go anywhere.
Yeah, there are going to be like social gatherings that they could do that and have something like a, you know, a few residents want to go out to dinner, but they go down and they have a few drinks, and then they leave. Could they have dinner, leave and go out, and then come, or use the tap wall and then? I mean, how many times could they access liquor, I guess is what?
The tap wall.
I mean, it is independent living, so our residents do come and go. There's no, you know, requirement to check in or out. It's an apartment with services, so there's always, there's always the possibility.
They have access to anything in their rooms as well, and, you know, but at least
at any point when somebody is purchasing alcohol from, from North Hill, there are people who understand what, you know, how to assess them and make sure that they are not, you know, they're not going to leave intoxicated. Unfortunately, whether, you know, whatever they do after that is a little bit up to them.
But there's monitors in the facilities then?
And including staff throughout the facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room? Anyone want to zoom, Miles? Mary Ann, do you want to do the Dan Matthews speech?
The Dan Matthews speech? So, you know that Needham used to be a dry town, and therefore, we take this licensing very seriously. We also do regular checks of all our licensees. We would expect you to be prepared for that. I would anticipate that the young person coming for a check is probably not your usual clientele, and presumably, that will help you to flag them. Well, we would hope to never see you back here. That's always our preference, all right? And I do just want to note that in this realm of alcohol being available, we appreciate your monitoring of that. We recognize that this is in fact, in some ways, you know, a new thing and maybe a benefit to having your residents just drinking in their rooms that this could be a check. And the other piece that I note that already did come up earlier is it is in our bylaws that we do expect that any IDs will be scanned where they need to be checked, so that we expect that you would have the necessary equipment to do so. Thank you very much.
And I would just add, North Hill has been a good neighbor to its neighbors. But to Mark's point, please be mindful of the dangers of alcohol and how it would affect the neighborhood. Does someone want to make a motion? It is.
Mr. Chair, I will move that one. We move to find that the issuance of an on-premises liquor license pursuant to Section 12 of Chapter 138 of General Laws to North Hill Needham Incorporated doing business as North Hill, located at 365 Central Ave., with Brianna Tucker as a manager of record, will not be detrimental to the educational and spiritual activities of schools and churches within a 500-foot radius of the establishment. And two, that said license to North Hill Needham Incorporated, as outlined in the application and subject to the rules and regulations of the ABCC, and the following sections of the Town of Needham Regulations for the Sale of Alcohol Beverages 2, 3, 5.3, 5.4, and 6, excepting Section 6.2, and substituting the phrase Continuing Care Retirement Community for the phrase Club and Veterans Organization. And 10, and 3, to authorize the town manager to send written notice of this decision to the applicant pursuant to Section 16C and the ABCC pursuant to Section 16B. Second.
Mr. Chair, there's a type porch B 865 Central Ave. Could you just make sure them?
Okay, for the record.
Thank you.
865, yes.
Got that in minutes?
You were correct.
All right. Any other thoughts? Okay, let's have all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, CMs. Thank you. Good luck to you. All right. Okay, next up, DPW Phase One Schematic Design Update. Hank Haff, Ken Sargent, Charis Lustig, Shane Mark.
And this is not a hearing.
This is, this is actually, yes, it's strange, but this isn't a hearing.
Not a hearing. It's like what the slides say. Only an update. Do you guys, you need another microphone?
Yes.
Have a mic.
All right. Good afternoon, good evening, rather. Here we are, DPW Phase One. Could we go down the road, just introduce your name and your affiliation?
Yes. I'm Hank Haff, Director of Building Design and Construction for the Town of Needham.
Ken Sargent, Senior Project Manager, Building Design and Construction.
Tyler Cofalici, Project Manager for Weston and Sampson.
And Mike Richard, Discipline Leader for the Facilities Group at Weston and Sampson.
Charis Lustig, Director of Public Works for Needham.
Shane Mark, Assistant Director of Public Works, Needham.
All right. Who wants to lead off?
I will start with a brief introduction, a little background. Perhaps some of you remember, we've been before this body before. Weston and Sampson Engineering started the DPW feasibility study back in March of 2023. Select Board Presentations, there were two made during that initial feasibility phase, one in July of 2023, where we outlined the various issues associated with the existing facilities for DPW. And then in September, did an overview of the options and a recommended preferred option that had been agreed upon with the PBBC. They published the final report in November of 2023, which was then posted on the town website for general, the general public. And in that study, there were four options that were studied. Option four was the preferred one, and tonight, we're looking at the first phase of, of that, which is in addition to the Jack Cogswell Building for the fleet maintenance. Phase two would be in addition to the Six Bay Garage over at 470 Dedham Avenue, which would provide accommodations for highway, parks and forestry, water and sewer, and wash bay. And then the third phase was to tear down and reconstruct the 470 building, but raising it up by two feet and moving it back by 30 feet from Alden Brook to avoid the flooding issues that have occurred over there. And then also, there was a 3B, which was daily building upgrades, and the RTS improvements were Phase Four. So, tonight, we're talking about Phase One, and I think I'll turn it over to you. Do you have access to the slides?
Yep.
Oh, Miles does, okay. And I'll, I'll turn that over to Weston and Sampson team to walk us through that.
Who's got control of them?
Does this work?
Oh, this is.
Yeah, there you go.
Mrs. is got it.
It's hard to make it as well as stop sharing to Charlie, who will be watching.
It would, it makes sense to take the opportunity to explain the value of this as far as depressurizing the existing building. So, the reason this was prioritized as our first phase is there's a bunch of factors right now that we have as to why we want to redevelop our Public Works building. The advantage of this is there's no relocation cost for this, because we're building on a site that is currently not being utilized, so we don't have to worry about temporary settings or anything else. It would allow us to build that first phase, which is on a completely different location, and depressurize the site by bringing all of the fleet operations over to a new location. They probably occupy about a third of the existing building right now with their, the existing building that's not storage space. And so, that would give some opportunity for other divisions to have a little bit more space while we are able to look for funding for Phase Two. So, that's why this has a value, not just for the fleet, which obviously will have a massive value for them, but will have a value for every one of the Public Works employees who will now have more space on their current location to be able to perform their functions.
Harvey, while we do just a brief workaround?
Can I ask a question about the funding? Do you anticipate going outside for funding? Or are you meaning, looking for funding within the budget?
I think looking for funding within the, within the budget. There's a few factors that I think make Phase One much easier to move forward with. Phase Two obviously is a site adjacent to a site that is owned by the school department and may potentially be a site for development for Pollard. So, I think in internal discussions, when we've looked at what we thought our funding schedule would be for this project, it became clear that it really didn't make sense to move forward with anything related to Phase Two until we had clarity on where Pollard was going to be located. Because if Pollard is located, for whatever reason, on that site, it makes developing that site for Public Works a significantly harder challenge, and it is now on an already constrained site. And we may then need to look at other locations throughout town for reconstruction or making the building smaller and separating out divisions. So, I think that is sort of the next key component in decision-making, to be able to say, now we are ready to look for funding for design.
Okay. Can I ask a question about that? So, for these Phases Two and Three, would this Jack Cogswell site be a potential site? In other words, by doing Phase One now, does that preclude us from considering it later?
So, I do not believe that the Cogswell site is an appropriate site for the rest of DPW operations. And the primary reason behind that is the traffic on Cogswell, on Central Ave. would make it very difficult for DPW to continue to operate efficiently. So, it's not so much about the impact of 50 additional vehicles on Central as much as it is on the traffic on Central and being able to deploy to sites at the rush hour morning, which is when we actually start, you know, our construction. So, we had looked at the RTS, and we had looked at Cogswell in past iterations of this, and we'd always rolled out Central Ave. for operation purposes. The reason the vehicle maintenance works is because you don't have that peak of exit and entering that building during rush hour, and so, you're really only talking about people who are being located there, and any vehicles that are specifically in need for service that day, not the rest of the equipment. So, I think it would not serve as a strong location for our operations.
I brought a flash drive, too, if that would help.
Unless you have it on PowerPoint.
Do you have it on PowerPoint?
No, you break it.
The PowerPoint would be. Should be the only one, only thing on there.
Is it?
Yeah.
You did great. That was really frustrating.
Okay.
We won't be able to share the, we, we have a work grab.
Yeah, we logged on to Zoom.
I was going to say that. I think that's what they're doing.
There we go.
Nothing to it.
That's brilliant.
So.
So.
I don't think that clicker is going to work, though.
Yeah.
Yes.
We'll just have to save the slide.
Join the next slide, click.
All right, so, we just wanted to walk you guys through an overview of the Phase One, as Hank was saying, and just introduce you to where we currently are. This first slide is just to orientate folks. We're, you know, just west of downtown Needham, right next to the RTS. Site's at the red, the red star. Next slide, please. And then we zoom in. The existing Cogswell Building is that L-shaped building in white. The beige rectangle is a planned renovation of the last bay in the storage garage. That's planned to be a tire maintenance shop. And then the orange addition is the rest of the fleet maintenance building. That's a proposed pre-engineered metal building that'll be attached to the Cogswell Building. And if you go to the next slide, please. This slide just highlights some of the site and utility features that are being planned. And this is a schematic SD level plan. So starting from the right, you'll see in yellow is the property line of the nearest butter. And as you move to the left, we'll come to a red line. That red line indicates where we're planning to have a ledge faced retaining wall. There's a, the finished floor of the maintenance building is around 172, and I highlighted the high point on the site, which is around 200. So at the highest point, that ledge retaining wall is gonna be in the order of 25, like 28 feet tall. And well, and is planned to act as a good buffer to the butters. Adjacent to that, we're planning on doing a bioretention basin to collect the storm water from the roof and the added pavement. We're also locating the generator and a transformer in the back right corner. The blue area at the bottom is an exterior wash pad to allow maintenance folk to just rinse down or wash their vehicles when needed before they maintain them. And then continuing on, we have water, electrical, and gas coming from Central. The natural gas is planned for the generator, and it is planned to be an all-electric building with net zero as a goal for the project. We're looking at doing geothermal wells to support the mechanical system with radiant floor heating inside the maintenance bays. And there's a planned sewer line extension. So there'll be gravity drain to a sewer pump station located just off Central Ave, and then there'll be a force main that runs along Central Ave, as shown in green, to an existing manhole. We also have plans to have a stubout to accept sewer for RTS in the future, if that's something that the town ends on, planning on doing. There's also an underground industrial wastewater holding tank in red that's servicing the existing building now. The plan is to bypass that and connect it to the proposed sewer system. I think that's mainly the big points on this slide, so if you want to move to the next, please. This is just a 3D rendering to give you guys a sense of what we're looking at as far as massing and its relationship to the new building. The, there's gonna be a small connector that connects between the two buildings so that the mechanics can access the locker rooms and offices and, without having to go outside. Next slide, please. This is just an overview of the interior of the space. Down on the left, on the lower floor, is the maintenance bays where the maintenance equipment, like vehicle lifts. We have a bridge crane that helps, that expands over the mezzanine, shown on the right. Mezzanine is for storage and excess space for the maintenance facility use. Below the mezzanine is the office, office spaces and parts room, a conference room, a break room, and also a locker space for the employees. And then you can see, we do have one drive-through bay for the mechanics to use as well, shown on this plan. The top right corner is where we're planning on locating the mechanical rooms for the geothermal equipment. And then the electric and plumbing come in on the bottom left of the building. And then next slide, please. The permits that we're anticipating to have to acquire for this project, at least the local ones, are go through, get a site plan special permit, as well as through the design review board. And the limit of work does cross into the conservation jurisdiction, so we intend obtain a notice of intent. And there will also be some permits associated with the geothermal wells through the Board of Health. Next page, please. This is just the summary of the schematic design cost estimate. We're estimating the total base project, including contingencies and soft costs, to be 19.6 million. And we are also planning for two bit alternates, which include rooftop solar and converting the existing storage garage, which is currently heated with natural gas, to air source heat pump or electric heat, again, to be in line with our goal of making this a net zero facility. Main reason for having these alternates is to give us some flexibility to adjust the scope of work to fit within the budget, given some of the uncertainties that we have with the grants that we're potentially, with the federal grants that we're looking to go after. Based on our review, we're looking at 1.7, $1.7 million roughly in grants potentially applicable to the project through state, federal, and green community grants. Yep. And then regarding the proposed schedule for the project, we are planning on completing our DD design deliverable early April with an updated estimate coming in at the end of March, and we're planning on having bids in hand by October. Yep. And I think that wraps it up.
Thank you. Okay, questions?
I don't have a question specifically about the project right now. Geothermal through the Board of Health. Why is the Board of Health involved in geothermal? What did I miss there?
They, I think they just want to make sure that we're meeting setbacks for public wells. I haven't looked into the details of them, but when we met with the, was it the DRT that was flagged by the Board of Health as being permits to gather before we drill the wells.
I think wells are under their jurisdiction regardless of the type. Is that fair?
Oh, okay. All right, on this, make, explain the drive-through bay. Why? I'm not complaining, I'm just curious.
I can take that question for you. So one of the biggest issues that we see in accidents we have in DPW are backing accidents because they are large vehicles that they operate, many blind spots on them. So that, also the flow of the site. And with the noise of the site is if you pull in with the, under federal law, we have to have the backup alarms, and you hear those going off. So by providing the drive-through bay, it will limit the amount of vacuum we'll have to do, and thus it'll eliminate some of the noise that would be caused on the site as well, backing the vehicles.
That's great. Thank you. The wash pad, is that also to wash down, like plows after?
So it could be that's not really what this is going to be designed, and I think a lot of that has to do with, if we're designing a full wash bay, there's a lot more efficiencies you would be building in to like, a full washdown system. This is more of like a person standing there and washing it out?
It's like a glorified power washer, I guess. Just, it's not to be designed as a vehicle wash, just.
Really a knockdown pad. So a vehicle comes in, the vehicle's covered in salt and snow and ice, and they need to get to a certain component of the vehicle, but it's covered with the debris. It's to knock that debris off to be able to access the equipment and the areas they need to access.
It can supplement what we currently have at 470, which is effectively the same thing, neither of which would be adequate to really meet our NIPD's requirements, which is why a full fleet wash bay is part of our phase two construction. But it will help, it'll, it'll double basically what we have for resources for doing it by hand.
Okay. And then my only other thought is on the retaining wall, 27, eight. Can we put a fence along the top so that someone doesn't accidentally fall down to the death?
Yes. And we're actually gonna be having a small, like a six-foot strip at the base, just to if a rock does fall off, it doesn't land on the driving way, so there'd be added safety there.
There was blasting that was done at the earlier, to put the Jack Cogswell building in, and there will need to be blasting done to achieve this as well.
Okay.
Yeah. I'd like to ask about the rooftop solar and the heat pumps. If, as you say, the grants are sort of.
Lots of uncertainty.
Uncertainty. What, what's the remedy there? Do you have an alternate plan to heat the building, or do you have an alternate pay, plan to pay for the, these appliances?
So the fallback, one fallback plan would be to do a PPA, Power Purchase Agreement. However, there are complexities with that related to the bond funding. And it might be that we would only be able to put the solar on the existing building and not on the new building. I won't go into all the details unless you want me to. Our hope is that the market seems to be getting more competitive now. However, we've just heard this morning that there are 25% tariffs on steel and aluminum. It's an all steel building. So we don't know where the bids will come at this, later this summer and early fall, once all of those factors come into play. I think that, Mike, you've seen more competitive bids?
Yeah, we've certainly been seeing more competitive bids, more, more bidders in the marketplace, which leads to more competitive pricing for the municipalities, so.
So one, one possible pathway would be to, and the reason why we call them alternates is because they could be deduct alternates or add alternates. And we may have to do a deduct alternate first to transition the geothermal into an air source heat pump system, similar to what was just put in at the Emmerich Grover building. If bids come in too high, that would lower the price by about $1 million. If there's sufficient, if, if the bids come in competitively and with the geothermal, which is part of the base building right now, then we could do an add alternate for putting the solar on the rooftop. And the fallback would be to wait until we get halfway through and then do a separate bid, like we did at Sunita Williams, to add the solar to the rooftop. The building would be designed to receive that solar as part of the base building. And the complexity about the rebates is that they don't come until the very end of the project, so that we can't, we can't assume that they're coming in. And hence, other articles that are likely to come forward at town meeting about having a sustainability revolving fund. Because the conversion of the existing building from gas to air source heat pump could potentially be a later project and a, a transition that would occur with funding potentially from that revolving fund. So there's complexity in that bidding process, and we hope to work through the uncertainties with that strategy.
Sure. Thank you. One other question, can you explain the bioretention basin?
Yep. Typically for stormwater, we are, try to infiltrate, but we'll be, you know, carving this out of ledge beneath it. So in order to get the treatment to meet the stormwater regulations, we'll be filtering it through two feet of soil, which will be cut with under drains before being discharged. So it's just a form of getting the treatment without having to infiltrate.
And so this is on site because we're gonna be washing salt off of trucks and?
Or is it required under our NIPD's?
Well, we're also adding impervious, and we want to make sure we don't increase peak discharge, so that'll also act as a peak rate attenuation.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So following up on Hattie's question about solar, you know there's the one parcel rule about the Jack Cogswell building, was that ever resolved?
It's getting close. It's been two years since the DPU took it on. And Gabby is, Gabby Queenan, our Sustainability Manager, is following that closely. We hope that issue will be resolved by the time we start building this building, and we will be able to have a second solar installation on the RTS site.
So if it's resolved for Jack's Cogswell, it would be resolved for this new building as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and if we could afford it, we, we could put solar on both existing and new. But that's, you know.
The only other comment I have, and I know, like, many of the decisions that got us to this point before I joined the board, the cost is, is something that I'm concerned with, only because we have so many other projects in the capital plan, including other DPW projects that are very high value, and almost, phases two and three almost seem to me to be even higher value. How, I just want to have a general conversation about how this fits in with our debt program, and that would be great. I want, I want my concerns to be alleviated, that we're not soaking up debt capacity for this project at the expense of other projects.
I can't speak to the debt, but I can talk about the prioritization component of it. So we really saw this as the first necessary step in order to move forward with phase two, and that you couldn't do phase two beforehand, because if you were to construct phase two, you're not addressing the fleet aspect of it, which is probably one of the most pressing issues. We have a very modern fleet that we're maintaining, and we don't have modern infrastructure in order to do that. One issue we have is that this is, they're the only staff that lives at that building for their entire shift. They don't have adequate ventilation right now. They don't have an adequate number of bays to be really efficient as far as the maintenance. You need one and a half bays per mechanic in order to be efficient, because you don't want to have to take a vehicle up, put it down while you're waiting for parts, and then have to pull it out, pull a new vehicle in. Ideally, you want to be able to triage one vehicle and then go to the next vehicle while you're waiting for materials in order to fix the first. So we really felt like addressing the fleet was the most critical aspect to be able to move to phase two and phase three. I believe the initial plan that we had for 470 before we looked at the redesign was, at the time, a $48 million facility, that we, I think realistically, looked within our department and said, we don't believe we're gonna be able to get the full facility ask in one go. So we had challenged Weston and Sampson with really looking at, how do you break this down into chunks, and chunks that are not necessarily contingent upon each function, right? So you could build, you know, we hope we move forward with building this particular infrastructure, and you could rebuild phase two at multiple locations. You don't, you're not stuck with one particular location, nor are you stuck with the order that it has to be in. And I think that was really the goal of that project, and to break it into chunks that are digestible for the community to be able to afford. So that's how we ended up coming up with the phasing strategy we did, just knowing that we weren't likely to be able to get the entire ask. And we knew if we kept on asking for the whole project, the project would just kick on getting delayed, and the facilities are just so critical to need to be upgraded in some sort of reasonable timeframe. So that's why we prioritize this particular project. You know, I think when we looked at what we thought was necessary to build a facility of the size we need for the type of inventory that we have for vehicles, I think that's really where we got to the financial dollar, knowing that, you know, I think if we grew the cost of the project too much, it wouldn't be something that could be afforded without having to go through an override.
I would just add to that, that one of the things, and Hank can speak to this, that we are obligated to do for the MSBA process for Pollard is to look at renovation of the site and another site, some, some other site, and also to look at six, and six, seven, and eight, and seven, and eight. And the only site that is in the school's jurisdiction at this point is the DeFazio parking lot. So until, essentially, this time, next summer, the summer of '26, is when we'll probably, we will know which direction we're going, and until then, we can't really make a decision as to whether the 470 phase two can even go forward.
I would just say, for the staff purposes, the, about three out of the five people who work at that facility will be retired before this new facility comes online. And I think from a, like, delay perspective, I think continuing to delay moving forward with any element of the project is going to push the entire project further back. And so I think taking this first step, while it doesn't alleviate all the immediate concerns of that facility, I think it helps address many of those concerns that will help us in the short term be able to use that site until we can invest in phase two.
You reminded me of another thing that will probably come up at town meeting. I think the Jack Cogswell building, my memory is that it wasn't originally intended to house people. And so people may just ask, you know, why did that change? Just the planning phases and, and what is the likelihood that our, these future phases are going to change over time?
So I think a really good explanation for that is COVID. So we ended up dividing DPW staff, and we housed 50% of our staff over at the Cogswell building. Emergency situation, we needed to preserve our forces, we couldn't have a situation where we quarantined 100% of our water treatment staff, for example, or we would not be able to treat water. So one of our approaches to that was we. So one of our approaches to that was we divided the staff into two separate locations, and we operated that way for, I think, at least 18 months. And originally, the plan for 470 was everyone had to be on one location, admin, all of the fleet, all of the operating divisions. You know, if we didn't all be on one location, it would all be terrible. And the reality was, we operated out of two separate locations, and things actually worked out fine. And that's when we started thinking about Needham as a campus, as opposed to the building as a specific location. What was interesting was, we didn't hear a single negative comment from the public about operating out of that facility. And a few of the things we have learned since the facility has been constructed, based on how it's located, both from a visual perspective, people didn't even realize we were there, and also from a noise perspective, those retaining walls retain a lot of sound. And you really don't hear anything when you're at the entranceway of that facility. And so that's where I think the change was. It almost happened because we used the facility differently during COVID, and we realized that, oh, it wasn't as disruptive as we thought. Again, I think the full 470, the full staff for DPW, would be much more disruptive because of the traffic coming and going versus the fleet, which doesn't have that many trips per day coming in and out of it. But I fully agree that they'll come up.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to us all.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the appointment and consent agenda.
Thank you. All right. Any discussion on that? Are all those in favor?
Hi.
Propose. Your names. All right. Plastic warrant articles. Are we onto that?
EverSource.
Oh, it was the EverSource gas project.
Oh.
The EverSource. It's in the agenda, but not in the packet.
Oh, all right. This is the House of Chairman.
They proposed winter work.
Oh, here we go. It's not even in my book.
Yeah, it's not in the books.
All right. Propose winter work.
So I apologize that you didn't get the documents in advance, but we have had a request from EverSource at our monthly meetings to change the location of winter work in town. Initially, they were on three roads, Wilshire, Prince, and a third that they were intending to do winter work on. But because of some leak concerns on Parish Road, they have asked to reprioritize their winter work. We have been clear with them that they cannot have more than two active work sites at a time, so it's not, they couldn't operate on three different locations. They had to narrow it down to two in order for us to manage their winter construction. And so they have asked to push back the other three locations until Parish Road is completed. They are still kind of hoping to get to those other locations before the end of our winter moratorium, but this was a higher priority. From our perspective, what could occur is that if the status of these leaks goes to a higher level, I believe they're currently like level two, and if they go up to level three, they will have the ability to do the work under emergency protocols, which we would prefer not to do, because they may then have three groups in town. So instead of waiting for that to happen, we've decided to be proactive and come to the board with a request to do this work in lieu of the other three locations from a prioritization perspective, and get your feedback on that issue.
Was the work on Parish, not on Parish, on the other roads, Wilshire and Prince? Thank you. Were those due to leaks as well?
No, those were due to their scheduled replacement program that they're under a mandate from DPU in order to transition all of that pipe. This is specifically due to leaks.
Yes, let's fix it. Oh, my God. Yeah, Debbie, Debbie, we don't want those headlines. Okay. Good. We didn't have to vote on that or anything, did we? Okay. Okay, next up, plastics warrant article. Kathy Reyes and Rob Fernandez, thank you both from Green Needham. I want to stipulate, this is just an initial determination. We are planning to hold a, whatever if we choose, we would have a public hearing in any of these issues, all right, probably on March 11. Tell us what you got.
Super excited, just wanted to share.
Thank you. All right. So thank you so much for
Thank you.
fitting us in the agenda.
Just like addresses?
Oh, addresses. Sure, 84 Wildwood Drive.
Rob Fernandez, 19 Bradford Street. Thank you.
I wanted to start out our presentation just with a bit of a visual aid. The most recent research that came out is that when scientists were researching on cadavers, they found up to seven grams of plastic in the cadaver's brain. This is about five grams, I laid it today. So that is in human brains right now. It's not talking about anything else in the body, but in just the human brain, and the impact that plastics have on us, and how we are consuming microplastics and nanoplastics on a daily basis. So I just want to kind of keep that as a visual. It's becoming more and more apparent that plastics are having a really negative impact on human health, along with the environmental impacts that it's having. So we're here tonight to talk about several ways to reduce exposure to plastics. The first is skip the stuff bylaw. This one would prevent restaurants from automatically including accessories in with takeout items or carryout items. Customers would have to explicitly opt in for the specific items that they would want, whether it is utensils, or napkins, or condiments. And the restaurant could only include items that were requested. So this is a positive change, both for businesses and for the environment, because it really gets rid of waste and things that are zero use, you know, things that get thrown into the bag, then you get home and you just basically throw them into your trash. So we find that this is kind of a win across the board. I don't know if you guys have questions, I can kind of talk about each specific bylaw, and then
Yeah.
questions on the specific one, or go through all of them?
Go through all of them.
All of them, okay. The second one under consideration is black plastic. We have learned that black plastic is, the black plastic containers and utensils are generally made from recycled electronics, which contain many different chemicals, flame retardants, heavy metals, things like that. And so when hot food especially is placed in these containers, it's much easier for those chemicals to sort of migrate into the food, and then we consume that food. There are a lot of different alternatives to black plastic that are available for restaurants to use, whether it be white plastic, clear plastic, aluminum, metal, paperboard, or compostable, certified compostable items. We're also doing a little bit of research into reuse programs as well. So there are a lot of different options for black plastic. And we would ask for black plastic ban across the board on dishware and containers, utensils, and serving ware, because we really just don't want food to be sitting in it in these black containers for any period of time. The other negative with black plastic is that it is not recyclable at all, because it is not seen by the sensors at the MRF facilities. So it's just kind of bad news all around.
Sorry, I didn't understand that last point, the MRF facilities?
Yeah, so when, if black plastic gets into the recycling and it goes through the recycling facilities, the lasers actually don't recognize the black plastic, and so it's just automatically put into the trash because of its color. So unfortunately, it's not recyclable at all.
Do they just take the black plastic, or they scuttle the whole load? I mean.
I think it's just the black plastic as it goes through.
Okay.
Gets discarded.
Yeah, it doesn't get pushed off into like the proper bin, because it's not even, it's not like seen by the lasers up there.
Yeah, we've had good conversations with Matt Demerius
Okay.
at the transfer station about this, yeah.
What's he say?
Yeah, he's explaining, he explained how there's this issue, that it just doesn't go through the system because of being black plastic, yeah.
So, and then the third bylaw that is up for consideration is on single-use plastic water bottles. And again, this is just, more and more research has come out about the negative impacts of plastic on human health. There's research that shows every time that you open and twist off the cap, that more particles fall into the water, up to 240,000 nanoplastics can fall into a one-liter bottle of water. And so as you know, you're kind of drinking, closing the cap, and opening the cap, it's sort of exacerbating the issue. Only a small fraction of water bottles are actually recycled. And we've also learned that when plastic is recycled, because it's not only the plastic particles, but it's also all of the chemicals that are part of the process to give plastic the flexibility or rigidity that we are familiar with, when it's recycled, that new sort of product is actually much more toxic. So anytime someone's talking about a recycled plastic water bottle, that, a recycled one is going to have a higher level of toxins in it. Also, plastic breaks down over time as it goes through the recycling process, so you always have to add virgin plastic into it in order to give it the flexibility or rigidity that it needs. So it's, plastic is really not recycled in the way we think about aluminum being recycled, instead it's downcycled into lesser items. So all of those
Talking water and soda?
Just water.
Just water. Yeah, tonight we're just talking about just bringing up a plastic water bottle, so that would be
What size?
One liter or less in volume, and it would include the boxed water as well. And I have a box water, if anyone is not familiar with it. The box waters actually were removed from our high school a year ago and replaced with aluminum that looks like this. And there was no issues at all, the kids just used these instead. So there's lots of different alternatives available in aluminum. So just to be clear, we're not banning water. We're just banning water in plastic bottles for aluminum or glass. And Green Needham has also created a TAF map last year, so citizens can go online and easily find any public water fountains that are available, either in parks or in different public buildings around town. And we are hoping to expand that to some of the restaurants and shops around town as well before the summertime hits. So, you know, the best option is always a reusable water bottle, Kathy has. But sometimes people don't have that, and so I just want to also mention that we could consider doing plastic water bottles. Last year, we pulled it off of our petition, and a lot of people in town said that they were disappointed about that. We talked to a lot of the restaurants and asked them to voluntarily start putting aluminum in stores as well, so that customers would actually have a choice between plastic and aluminum. And as far as, you know, I've seen in my experience, they have it. So it's challenging. My daughter, on a half-day, tried to find something to drink that wasn't in plastic, and ended up with a Starbucks glass bottle, you know, caffeine and sugar. Not great, but it was in plastic, so, but there's just not a lot of options available for when kids are looking for them, and more and more are.
Thank you. All right. Any questions, comments, criticisms?
I wonder if you could speak to the relative cost difference of the black plastic versus all of the others?
Yeah, sure. So in our experience, what we've heard is that there are a lot of options. Some of them might be a little bit more expensive, but white plastic seems to be pretty comparable and available for restaurants if they wanted to switch from the black plastic to white plastic. Some of the compostable ones are going to be more expensive, but, you know, there seem to be options that are reasonable, that are available.
Yeah, so the color, white or black, is it six of one, half dozen of the other?
Yeah, it might be like a little bit more expensive for white, but it's not.
We could always follow up, more information about that.
Okay.
I think one point I was going to mention, oh, go ahead, Josh.
No, no. I was just going to mention too, that as far as the first two items, skip the stuff and black plastic, you know, having that removed, we've had, we've spoken with Greg Reidman as well at the chamber, and the chamber has said that they would be supportive, you know, of these two initiatives. In part because they've been, and I don't want to say too much, Greg would speak better at this than I would, but that there's been good support in the city of Newton for them. So it seems like, well, it's working there, we could bring that here. And then also, those two items are kind of similar to what we've been able to phase out in the past, like last year, the Styrofoam takeout containers, that was passed by town. You know, those are not recyclable, black plastic is kind of like that. So it's, it kind of is a way to extend to other items what's happened in the past. The same with straws, you know, last year at town meeting, it was passed that straws would only be available upon request by customers. Skip the stuff is kind of very similar to that. So that's why, you know, those two items are supported by the chamber, and they're also kind of extension of what's been done before. Yeah, maybe I didn't speak exactly correct, but generally
Were you amending? Josh?
I just want to clarify, as I said earlier, we support the black plastic, but we want an exemption for four ounces or smaller.
Oh, right, sorry. The smaller items, that's
Thanks for the clarification.
That was just one of the points I wanted to mention.
And just in our experience, Newton, I think, is because of what Newton had passed, and they're actually, that was a loophole, that they were trying to not ban anything that was not recyclable, and four ounces and less, those containers are not recyclable anyway. But black plastic, you know, you don't want like ketchup sitting in black plastic condiments for a really long time, because, as containers, because the black plastic is a hazard to human health. So we thought that that would kind of confuse the issue. So our ban would be on all black plastic, utensils, and all, all. And the Board of Health actually just supported all three of these bylaws, so we spoke with them too.
So I have four comments in context to, so the board with this discussion is discerning whether or not we should support any of these, rather than have it go through a citizen petition.
Yes.
So my four comments, on skip the stuff, it seems very reasonable. Like, I think I have enough info, I mean, I don't know how much more research would have to be done by town staff to do it. I think it seems easy, and I would support the select boards sponsoring that. On black plastics, I appreciate the additional information. I feel like more information would be required, and I don't know that town staff has the bandwidth to do that, so I guess I would prefer that it be a citizen's petition. I'm not saying that I've made the decision either way, just I think we have a lot of things that town staff has to, you know, do. And then on the plastic water bottle, I guess I would just reiterate what I think I told you, Kathy, last year. I think that access to drinking water is really important, and I don't like drinking out of plastic water bottles if I can avoid it. Sometimes I can't, though. Sometimes I don't have another, you know, container at my disposal, and if it's a choice between dehydration or drinking from a plastic water bottle, I'm going to choose the plastic water bottle. As a health matter, I know the Board of Health supports this, I think it is a health matter, and we, you know, make so many other health widely accessible to people, you know, mental health services, vaccines. We go out of our way to make sure that people can get them in many different ways. And I feel like this is a health issue as well, and we should allow people to have access to drinking water in as many ways as possible. So I would not support the plastic water bottle.
Even though there are a lot of aluminum options available? So we're not banning water, we're just banning it in plastic?
Well, yes, because
I understand.
Because, like you said, there are not many stores that are selling aluminum water bottles. Even though it's an option, it's not a practical option. People can't find it in many places. And so, I mean, I think we need to educate people, like, right now, stores do have the option to buy aluminum water and sell it. We can educate stores to do that more often. I don't think that right now there is a practical alternative, unless people are bringing, you know, their own bottles, which people do, but not all the time.
Yes, I'm saying if it was banned, then the stores would, I think, automatically start carrying aluminum as an option. So I think, you know, because we have asked them to, you know, voluntarily switch, but there is a cost difference. that there is a cost difference. And so that, you know, they're, they're looking out for the bottom line versus health, so.
And I think, I'm thinking from a consumer perspective, that the risk is that, you know, if stores don't, you know, stock these aluminum alternatives, then the consumer just has no alternative.
The choice.
Do you, do you understand that, or we've been told that if people order aluminum bottles, that they need to order bigger quantities to get a more reasonable price, which results in other storage issues for people? Is that your understanding as well?
Heard that.
Yep.
As a-
Yes.
Yep, but I did talk to many stores in Arlington where a plastic water ban was, water bottle ban was passed a couple of years ago, and they are able to get, you know, they don't have to buy a pallet. It is more, there's additional cost savings, you know, buying bulk generally is a cost savings, but you can, they, they still can get smaller amounts, like a case, cases of water as well. So that is an option as well. And the same thing on the, on the Cape, there's, I've chatted with some stores there. So even, even as far as the Cape, the distribution is, is available for, for aluminum and glass options.
And do you have any insight as to if a teen is faced with a choice of a much more expensive water in aluminum bottle, and a much less expensive to them soda is an option, which they choose?
I can only speak, you know, from my own experience and my kids. I think kids will purchase whatever beverage they're looking to purchase versus, versus cost. They're not generally the best at penny pinching when they're going into a convenience store and buying exactly candy or whatever else. You know, so I think if they are feeling like they want water, I think they're going to, they're going to buy a water versus a, versus a soda. I think, I think it's really just driving whatever they're feeling like having. And they buy Boba, which is super expensive too. So it all depends on, you know, on what they're, what they're looking for.
So another question. I know last year, you guys pulled this from town meeting, but, but there had been some discussion of why only water, why not more broadly? And, and I'm just interested in what you're seeing, you brought it back this way, only water, what your thinking has been?
Yes, so there are-
You go, and then I can add.
So for water bottles, there are now 28 towns and cities that have passed water bottle bans in Massachusetts. So it's, it's more common, and seems to be kind of the first step because tap water is readily available. There are a lot of different options that people can get. And so that's kind of why we were starting a little bit, a little bit smaller. We have drafted a more extensive beverage bottle ban, but, you know, know that that's, that's a bigger, a little bit of a bigger ask. So we just wanted to kind of, again, bring it back to sort of what, what we had started with last year and kind of researched last year.
Yeah, I was going to add, yeah, we had five items that we had put together, proposed petitions for, which we had talked to a few people about, but thought, you know, based on feedback, that it made sense to kind of, like Kathy said, focus in on a, on a fewer items. And, you know, one or two that might be an easier lift, as you said, Josh.
I would just say that while generally I'm absolutely in favor, I agree that the health risks exist, and people shouldn't be drinking out of plastic bottles. I mean, they just shouldn't. But I, I, and the black plastic, I mean, seems to me, if it's true that there is a cost-equivalent alternative, that seems like a very easily removed item. What does, what does make an impression on me is the level of uncertainty that our businesses are dealing with right now. Spoken with a number of them this week and last about the tax assessments. There are just an extraordinary number of challenges that I hear them saying that they're facing. And I think it's simply not feasible to make so many changes now. So I agree, skip the stuff is a no-brainer. And again, if the relative cost difference of a black plastic container versus anything else is not too great, and, and I think, you know, we have to acknowledge that restaurant margins are really, really slim, so not too great can't, in the, in the aggregate, has to be really not that much, then I would support that. I'm, I hate, I hate to, to say that I, I'm not into the water bottle ban, because I really think it's appropriate. But at the same time, everyone does, you know, have free choice at this point. And I guess I'd, I'd love to see this handled at the state level. That might be a type dream. But I, I do agree that the, the risk exists. I just, I just, I have a really hard time imposing this on the businesses right now. And I, I'm not sure when that will change, so it feels like a bit of a cock-out. It's not meant that way. But the reality is that our businesses are struggling, and I don't want to make it any worse.
Yeah. On the black plastics, is this the sale of them, but like Restaurant Depot, they're going to be prohibited from selling black plastics?
Yes.
They would be, okay. Did you contact them?
I have not contacted them about the black plastic, but they were able to phase out the polystyrene. So it was a similar type of-
Okay.
Situation.
Okay.
Sorry. Just, can you remind me what the mechanism for enforcement is? Because I, I definitely got takeout the other day that came in sty, probably, like Styrofoam.
Yeah. It's the Board of, Board of Health.
And so what is this? This is only on enforcement on complaint?
Yes.
As far as, yeah.
And they would be checking it, I think, right? As they go restaurant to restaurant is part of their review, I think.
Supplies.
Yeah, on it, but-
Well, maybe it was an anomaly.
I was going to also speak to the Board of Health to see if there's some sort of a way that we can kind of capture some information about, you know, if a consumer is getting stuff in, in polystyrene or, or something that's been banned, like a plastic bag or something like that, if there's a way to sort of capture that information somehow and kind of work with them on that in order to-
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just worry also that, you know, if we don't, it, it seems like we're adding more and more to the Board of Health's enforcement, and we're not adding more and more to the Board of Health's funding necessarily-
The Board of everything.
For that thing. So I just worry that that's kind of a burden that we're just imposing on them and on the town that we haven't adequately prepared for.
I think that's, we think that's a fair point, for sure.
It's certainly something that we, it's on our radar, you know, and talked to them about, so. And we've been in touch, like directly with the person that, on the Board of Health that was going to enact the, like, she talked to us about the straws and the polystyrene and things like that. So we are just into February, so I think there's still the transition period a little bit, as, you know, things just went into play January 1st, so.
Oh, so they could just be moving through their stock.
Exactly. So it's kind of an education, you know, now that we've kind of passed all of those, we want to go back and re-educate the, the restaurants and just to make sure that they're following and they understand exactly what the expectation is, so.
We hadn't re-notified any restaurants until right before January 1st that it was going into effect, so nobody was prepared.
Okay.
Exactly. Do you, do you know, have you done an inventory of how many businesses in town are using black plastic? I was trying to remember the last time I've gotten black plastic, and I'm not sure when it was.
I haven't, I mean, just, you know, I'm totally, I've seen it around, a lot of the, like, the Chinese restaurants use it, I think some of the, the Italian restaurants use it. There's quite a, quite a few that do, but I don't, I don't have that specific.
Have we tried notifying people of what the challenges are with black plastic? Or are we just looking to move straight to a regulation instead of engaging first?
We have, like, in what way? Just kind of from an education perspective, like an article kind of thing? We haven't, we have not done an article yet, no.
Or reaching out.
Outreach to restaurants.
We haven't done that.
Working with the town to help reach out to people, to educate them about what the challenge is with these products. I, I just think, particularly if there are relatively cost-equivalent options, it seems to me like maybe an education campaign might be a worthy first step. Then imposing another set of regulations and potentially burden on people, just to make sure that they understand the what and the why they might do that. Skip the Stuff, so I'm kind of amazed with Skip the Stuff. Like, again, I would sit here and say, do we have to move to regulation to say, don't give people extra things? Like, when they're trying to save costs? I mean, it seems kind of crazy that, that we have to do that. And I, I actually thought we were in an environment where people, where things were really request-only for most things. I mean, I'm probably not your typical takeout person, but-
It's likely that, that restaurants get complaints from customers if they don't provide. I mean, because, you know, you take something out, if you're not going home, then you get there, and like, how are you supposed to eat your soup?
Right, or your soy sauce.
You know, because you don't have-
Yeah.
Utensils, if you didn't ask, if you didn't know you had to ask.
Again, I guess I would sit here and say, could we tell people first? You know? Could we tell people and change this practice and, and make that happen? I mean, I, I just, as we talked about, the whole enforcement thing, the burden on the businesses, I mean, my sense is the businesses would be delighted to not have to do this, right? It really shouldn't be part of the thing. And it, it feels like we're going from zero to 100 here with the regulation, 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 and that is concerning to me, I think.
Did Greg Reiman say anything about this?
I think he did, actually. If you want to-
You have to voice it. Or he can ask.
Well, I think he, in conversation with Greg, he said that businesses, to your point, Marion, did appreciate this and found it as to be a cost savings and not have to automatically provide it. And it would be something that on an online forum, the customer would request it.
I would think also that it would give the restaurant a little cover. Honestly, it's easier to enforce this rule when it's the town who's told you to do it versus, you know, so when a customer who's unhappy with you complains, you can shift the blame, and I think that's fair.
That's, that's what we've, what we've experienced, I think, what Greg would say as well.
I was going to say too, Marion, just really briefly about, we definitely see your point about regulation. I was just thinking about years ago with the plastic bags, how that was voluntary, it didn't work so well, and we had to come back to do a bylaw. And it's just like Heidi's point, it makes it easier if it's just across the board, and this is, this is what stores need to comply with. And then hopefully it's a benefit to them, a cost benefit.
The other thing to think about with Skip the Stuff is Newton has passed it, Wellesley is working on one, and we are too, and so that it does help across communities that, you know, we're all sort of putting in the same kind of practices, so the expectation of customers is similar across our communities, just to give you a background.
I wonder if, I wonder if the cost reduction that might accompany Skip the Stuff would be enough to offset the potential cost increase of moving away from black plastic.
Yeah, and like I said, with our, the restaurants didn't find any issue with switching away from black plastic.
How many restaurants did you speak to?
Just talking to the Green Newton team and the work that they've done. So I didn't, I haven't, I didn't speak to anyone directly, but-
Well, I have, I have spoken with a couple of restaurateurs about the black plastic, and they don't share your opinion?
Okay.
So I guess I, I just, I'd like to learn more about the cost differential.
Okay.
Just to reassure myself that we're not harming, even though it might be worth it.
So when I look at this, I think we're trying to balance, on the one hand, the known severely detrimental health impacts of plastic, which are, I mean, very, very significant.
People should be educated about, but-
Very, very significant, with the potential damage to local business of these regulations. So when we look at it, the Skip the Stuff, I see no detriment. And why not? I mean, I don't, I don't think this is going to be onerous for us to enforce, because I think the businesses will probably welcome it, so I don't see any reason not to do this. And if it has any, any incremental health benefit at such a low cost, to me, it is a no-brainer. On the black plastic, I tend to be in favor of this, given that there are so many other alternatives. Now, if we, if we decided to take it up, we would have another hearing.
Yeah.
Right? So at that other hearing, I would expect that if businesses did find this to be onerous, they could tell us, and that that might, you know, mean that we don't end up supporting it. But it seems to work in these other places. It also seems to be particularly unhealthy and a lot of alternatives. And, you know, when I think about my own takeout, there's sometimes black plastic, but there's sometimes the aluminum, there's sometimes different colored plastics. I do see a lot of alternatives there. So I guess I would like to move forward, and I, I was going to mention the plastic bags also. I, I do believe that if you don't insist on things, they will not happen. I'm not a great believer in just talking to people, plus that's actually way more time-consuming than just saying, no, you can't do it. The, the bottles, unfortunately, I, I was supportive of it last year. I would like to be supportive, but eventually, I'm particularly concerned with the tariffs and the, the cost of aluminum, just potentially skyrocketing. So I think, again, if we look at it, the, the benefit would be huge, but the cost is potentially also huge right now and very uncertain. And so that one, I mean, I guess I like the way you guys are thinking in terms of being incremental. So if we can just keep moving forward, even if the steps are incremental and we can't make the huge step yet, we keep moving forward, and maybe there will be state regulation, maybe there will be cheaper alternatives. I would like to get there. I think we maybe now is not the time to get there. But I would, you know, totally skip the stuff, no-brainer. I would like to move forward on the black plastic, given the alternatives are there.
All right. So if there's this much plastic in my brain, our brain, are our brains recyclable? And think of the safety-
End of life.
You know, I think last time, last year, last, when you brought this up, I sensed, and you had pulled back on the plastic ban, I, yeah, the bottles, I sensed that Tommy would have gone for it. I think they were looking for like a bold stroke, and like, this is something we want to do. Thinking about this time around, I lament that it doesn't include soda, because I think that's a more consistent argument. If, if plastic is bad, is bad, is bad, and it's even worse with you drinking sugar. So I would like that argument better. But I'm kind of thinking this year, it just feels like there's so much uncertainty. People are going to be curling their toes, looking eyes there on the diving board, and thinking, I'm not sure I'm going to make this plunge. I think last year, maybe it would have worked. And so I was hopeful for this year, but I'm thinking things, I think people are in a different spot right now. So Skip the Stuff, yes. Black plastic, I want to hear a bit more about, but I feel the water bottle ban is another time, hopefully soon, but, okay. Any other thoughts?
Sure. I forgot my fourth point.
Oh, all right, here we go.
I think this is a really awesome discussion, and I think it would be great to have more discussions like this with other residents who are interested in certain proposals, because it's kind of in this informal kind of way before, you know, gets in the warrant. I think it's really helpful.
Yeah, we have leaflets coming up soon.
It's in the warrant already, though, I think is your point.
Yeah, gotcha, okay. Excellent, good point.
Can I ask, what would be the next step?
Okay, so we'll take, we're going to vote on which ones we want to take up, and then we'll have a hearing, so hearings for March 11th. And please join us.
Great, yeah.
And we'll do hearings, and we'll see what people, what the feelings are, and then we'll move forward from there.
Decide from there.
Okay.
Can I make a motion?
Please.
So I would move that the board vote to sponsor Skip the Stuff bylaw, subject to revisions made by town council.
Okay. And other motions?
Yeah.
And we can take things separately.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So I'll second that one.
Okay. Okay, good. All right, thoughts? Nothing? All right, well, let's take your vote, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we're in water bottle, I'm sorry, we're doing skip the stuff. I'm reading, I'm reading outside, um, okay.
That's great.
Anyone want to make an additional motion?
I, I move, Mr. Chair, that the board vote to sponsor the, um, single-use plastic ban for black plastic, subject to revisions being made by town council.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I'm gonna say that I'm less enthusiastic about this, but I'm willing to listen at a public hearing. I think it's often difficult for our, our restaurants to get to our public hearings. I note that this is their primary time of business, and, um, I would really challenge the board to find some other way other than town staff to get some feedback from those entities and, uh, understand what's actually being used in town.
Yeah, if only it was like a Chamber of Commerce guy who could show up and give some input.
And perhaps, I mean, perhaps if the, the restaurateurs in town who aren't available to come to an evening public hearing wanted to submit something in writing, uh, we could certainly have those potentially read into the record or at least, you know, added to the packet.
And I do think they have an email list or something, but I, I think it would be helpful to understand what people are already using.
Yep.
For how many people is this an issue, and do they consider the alternatives viable?
Okay, thank you.
And I similarly also would want to learn more, but I think for that reason, would prefer that it be a citizen petition rather than the select board supporting it.
Can you just, um, share what you would want to learn?
Oh, I, I mean, what the alternatives are, um, how practical those alternatives are, health impacts and recycling, things like that.
Sure, if, if that was, if some of that information or all of it was presented at the public hearing, would that change your?
I might, basically, I'm saying I might personally support it with that additional information. I think for tonight, the select board to sponsor it, it means that eventually at town meeting, one of us is going to have to get up and, and speak to it, and.
I think we're, we're saying it's conditional upon more consideration at the public hearing, though. Aren't we?
Yeah, I mean, do you want to have a public hearing?
If I could say that, that you would sponsor it to the public hearing, I think is the initial sponsor.
I don't think we're saying we're gonna, this isn't the final decision.
Oh, oh.
The warrant closes March 25th for the special, so you could decide on the 11th or the 25th that it shouldn't be.
Got it, I understand, thank you.
Okay.
So just to be clear, this vote is to move it to the next phase?
Yeah.
Not necessarily further than that.
You could even change the motion if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
So the motion could be amended to note that it, in fact, exempts those smaller than four-ounce containers, for example.
And also that it's conditional upon the results of a public hearing.
Oh, a public hearing, yeah.
Okay, all right. Is anyone seconding that?
Seconding what? We had, we had a motion.
You amended.
Yeah, yeah, the amended motion. I'll, I'll second the amended motion.
Do you want me to move the motion?
Kathy, sorry.
Kathy, the original.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. We've discussed, let's vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so doing, um, black plastics. Next, someone to make a motion about plastic water bottle ban.
I don't think we should take that forward this year.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. So then I would move that the vote, the board vote not to sponsor. I mean, if, if we need to address this with a motion, you're gonna vote. So I would vote that the board vote not to sponsor, uh, single-use plastic water bottles by law, period, this year.
We could also just take no action.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, like, do we need to actually?
Well, we should vote on it. We should just vote.
Okay, I guess my question is, so we could vote certainly not to sponsor. Do you want to vote to recommend that this is not the year? That we don't think this should go to town meeting? I mean, I guess anybody can make their decision, but.
Keep your phrase.
I'm not sure what the, what the difference is. I'm not sure what you're saying.
Yeah.
Do you take a strong?
Ever, or not, not now?
I said not this year.
Yeah, no, no, I, I mean, is that?
Didn't say not this year.
Is that the difference that you're saying, like, not this year versus never?
Whereas a citizen's petition, or.
Well, so that's what I'm saying. I think that if we say no, and it came back as a citizen's petition this year, I think that would still be an unfortunate outcome.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, and but, I think we would take a position at that time.
It is true that citizens can make their own decisions, okay? But, but our recommendation, I'm saying, do we want to also recommend that we really don't think this is the year for this?
For us to bring it forward, yes.
For anybody to bring it forward, frankly. That's my question.
You can do what you want, but I would caution.
Yeah, we've heard, we've heard this.
I want to say everyone's good, so we're here, we're listening.
All right, yeah.
So I certainly would, uh, support the select board not bringing it forward. I do not think, and I would oppose this this year. That's what I would say.
Okay.
I'm not sure we need a motion for that. I mean, I think the message has been.
I think it's pretty clear.
Got it, got it. Water bottle system. We'll be back, but not this year.
All right.
We're good?
So we're good?
Yeah.
All right, let's move on.
Thank you.
All right, I rescind my motion.
Do we rescind the motion?
I did, rescind it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your homework. Thank you. Next up, close the 2025 annual town meeting warrant. Apes back, town manager.
Mr. Chair, um, I just would, uh, highlight a few items that, um, were not on the preliminary list that we're proposing in this, um, version of the warrant. And also to note that it's customary that the warrant, even though it's closed, it's closed for submissions from other departments, it's closed for citizen petitioners. The board can take action to amend the warrant at any of its meetings before we print it. And in fact, um, almost every meeting between when we close the warrant and when we mail it, that there's some change that, that needs to get made. So just that that's the board's prerogative, it's closed for the, for the rest of government. They're, uh, they're not numbered at this point, as you know, because they keep things pulled and then the numbers get changed, but Miles was kind enough to pageinate. I would note on page 27, we've included everything from the Community Preservation Act. They are coming, the CPC representatives are coming to your meeting on February 25th for their required consultation. They will let you know what, where they're thinking on these, so that, these may not be the ones that are included if they don't move on forward.
There was some discussion about amend, an amendment, how do I say it? A revision to an application.
Right, so my understanding is that the Housing Authority had asked for a revision of the article on page 28 for seabeds that, um, from the 5.6 million to?
9.9.
9.9 million, so the CPC hasn't, they haven't made a decision on that yet, so.
Okay.
Does closing the warrant preclude any changes?
This, the arti, the CPC's articles, um, the, the board has traditionally, um, made amendments to the CPC articles at their request, because, for instance, they have not yet, because of our timing, identified a funding source for them, so, um, that is the traditional method by which the board acts. As you know, CPC articles, when they go to town meeting, they can't be amended, but, um, the warrant timeline is not always consistent with things like, and the budget's not here until the middle of March. So yes, so those are the filed ones, and as I was noting, the, um, uh, the seabeds, they've asked for an increase on that. There's also been conversation, um, at the CPC about potential borrowing for these and, um, um, working on setting up a meeting with CPC to understand that, and then, uh, they may, I assume they will talk to you about if they have a recommendation on that.
Okay.
We will also have a recommendation from the staff, so see if that comes forward.
Okay.
Page 39. I think, um, Dave Davidson may have mentioned this, but it was not on our preliminary list. Well, we'd be seeking an amendment to the general bylaws that, um, amends the contracting period for, um, it now says oil and fuel for five years, and we'd be seeking to move that to energy resources. That includes, um, electricity, fuel, propane, and natural gas and oil. So it was, it was a limiting, um, feature that we want to make sure that we can get the, um, the best pricing for five years, because we didn't, we couldn't always do that. Was it the natural gas that we couldn't call? Natural gas was. Yeah, and then, um, software licensing and maintenance agreements. Just to be clear, a lot of our software now includes hosting agreements, and it, just to be super clear that we can go to 10 years for those. So, um, these were items that Finance and, um, Information Technology had asked us to move forward.
Article X.
Which page?
Article X, something 40?
Page 40.
There's two here. The, the Health Department and the Board of Health have asked that we change the Immunization Program Revolving Fund to be a Clinical Services Program Revolving Fund for costs associated not just with immunization and vaccines, but, uh, medical countermeasures, distribution, disease testing, and other clinical programs. And we can invite them in to talk to you about what those are, but.
There's still a case of Immunization Program Revolving Fund in that last fiscal year's section. I presume that needs to be updated?
Yep, and the date, too.
Well, although that's.
There's a question about the date, I can get back to you on that. That's when the immunization, that's when the.
That's when that program started, but it then doesn't go forward, so.
Right, we're remaining there.
In the same way.
Right, I'll, I'll double check on whether we need to.
Okay.
And then, the second one, it's on intellixible?
Accept, yeah, clause 22, 22nd, 22nd I and 22nd J.
These are the provisions of the HERO Act, which were on your list, but are exceptionally confusing. We, we will be making a presentation, Dave and the team. It expands the availability of some of our exemptions and increases them for veterans. Exactly how it does that, we would like to bring more of a presentation to you. But, um, that the HERO Act, um, was intended to do lots of different things to improve the ability of veterans to access, um, these resources, and so there, that's in there. We actually, when we see you, um, I think at your next meeting, we'll have a preliminary conversation about the special town meeting articles. We have the Valor Act, which is another veterans, uh, program, and, um, another, another section that we can adopt in state law that would allow for additional tax abatements for, um, affordable housing that's not designated as affordable housing. So for instance, correct me if I'm wrong on this, residents or landlords who have tenants who are at or below 80% AMI, whose housing costs are at or above 30%, there, there's a mechanism that the assessors can grant abatements for those, because they are essentially affordable housing, but not deed restricted for. And that this is an annual occurrence with proof, so. We're trying to marshal all of the possible exemptions that we can, given the costs of taxes, so. Clause 26 I and 22nd J, we will be having a full presentation.
In the interest of, um, clear titles, can the title say, you know, clauses 22nd I and 22nd J, you know, dash?
Yes.
Accepting provisions of the HERO Act or something?
Yes. This comes under minor technical corrections to be made?
Yes.
Yes. And the article information will obviously help.
Obviously. The conspiracy theories that could come from this. Just saying.
The Retirement Board had asked for an increase in the cola base. That was on the list, but we'll have more information for you on that. Again, a, a little bit of a precursor to the special, we will be, um, proposing a capital equipment fund article in the special town meeting. And I think Hank mentioned earlier, we will be recommending, um, the board to consider, um, essentially a, an energy efficiency rebate revolving fund in the special that would allow us to, when we bring in the rebates for energy efficiency improvements, to be, to spend them back on, um, energy efficiency programs and project, capital, capital projects. So Gabby will be in to talk to us about that. And then, um, as I think we noted earlier, there are two citizen's petitions, one on leaf blowers and one on nuclear disarmament. And we will ask the petitioners to come to a meeting of the board, likely in April.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, two general comments. One is kind of a repeat on debt. So I just noticed that in the warrant, by my count, over $27 million in debt could be issued. And this is, I think, like, um, our 2023 audit said that there were about $113 million in principal outstanding in debt. So it's, it's just a significant chunk in debt. And I think the big elephant in the room at town meeting is going to be, like, what are our other debt obligations and how does that impact it? So at a future meeting, could we discuss that?
And I, thank you for reminding me, um, one of the things that we are looking at to bring to the board is if our free cash does come in higher than we're expecting. Um, we, we've been thinking about what article we might convert from debt, and I think the quiet zone might be a good candidate for that. And, um, Dave has, uh, has indicated that the facility financing plan will be done before town meeting, and he will bring that in for robust.
Thank you.
And also, uh, the number that's in here for the quiet zone isn't the, is placeholder number, right?
Yes.
Because it's, their estimate is due to us in March.
Got it, okay.
So who knows?
Okay. The other point, um, is that there were three articles that, uh, I think Forestry Management, Climate Action, and State Funds for Public Ways that reminded me of articles from last year that, uh, well, one was State Funds for Public Ways, the others were, um, I think, planning consulting assistance and, and health consulting assistance. I think town meeting members kind of want enumeration of what they'll be used for. That's, that's what I've heard, and actually, I've expressed that.
I think chapter 90 did say that it's, um, that the current plans are Central Avette, Upper Plain, and Marquee.
I, I think more specifically, um, well, regarding chapter 90, I think people were surprised, I was surprised, that we were using the funds for consultants, not actual construction. And it, it's not bad, I'm not saying there's something wrong with it, but telling town meeting members in advance that that, what they can expect it to be spent on, I think might be helpful.
Okay, I'll follow up with you on that.
Yeah, yeah, we can talk about that.
Who was the other one? It was chapter 90, yeah?
Uh, the other ones, the I flagged, Forestry Management, Climate Action. I, I can just imagine people getting up and saying, well, what specifically, you know, is this going to be spent on? And just having, you know.
I think Forestry Management has a, has a whole plan.
Does it? Okay.
I'll get, uh, it's.
Okay.
It's just not in the information in there.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Maybe, sorry, maybe I can expand upon it. In, in general, like, when we, when we have funds, like, for consulting assistance, or, you know, um, I think the, the general concern is that, you know, we have pots of money that can be used for an unspecified purpose, or, or it's specified, but maybe vaguely. And I think people want more specificity in that.
And I, I think one of the difficulties is they're in there so that we can meet situations that we didn't know were coming, right?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I, I think if they are spent, uh, under the direction of the board and the department to accomplish the work that the citizens expect them to do, I'm comfortable with leaving that open, I, I would just say, but.
Yeah.
We'll work on the more specific for climate and forestry, and I can get you more information on chapter 90.
Thank you.
I appreciate it as an information point, but yeah, to Marion's other point to say, you let your managers be managers, you want them to spend on this area, but they should know, like, here's information.
Well, and I think we've all had years where you end up with things that are topics that were not anticipated and where you needed resources to learn more. So it's not unprecedented in any way, shape, or form, that that would be necessary, so.
Thank you. All right. Kate, this got cut off. What is this reprint?
It's the nuclear--
I think it's from the nuclear petition.
I don't think it's cut off. It's just, they attached the actual sheet.
Yeah, it's on many pages.
It is on many pages, yeah.
Okay.
The warrant closure does need a--
Yep. So I would entertain a motion.
Find it first.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to close the warrant for the 2025 Annual Town Meeting, subject to minor technical corrections, to be made by Town Manager, Town Council, and Bond Council.
Second.
All right, discussion?
I will just note, I did ask Kate earlier today, in case anybody else has my same question about ADUs. You've probably seen a lot of discussion in the press about ADUs and some new ADU legislation that the state passed. It's my understanding from Kate that we expect to see that in the fall, primarily because the Planning Board is trying to understand not different regulations, but a provision related to site plan review and what they can actually do relative to ADUs for site plan review. So that's what's holding them up in not doing it this spring, which is, I think, what many other towns are doing is they're bringing it this spring. So that's why that's not here.
Okay. All right, let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're closed. Thank you. All right, next up. Tree Preservation Planning Committee Recommended Appointment.
We have one more--
Wait, do I get ahead of you? I'm sorry. Oh, there we are.
The Stephen Palmer Development Review Committee Charge. You'll recall that at the special time meeting in October, we received appropriation for two studies. One is the planning study to help us determine a plan for the relocation of tenants, to the extent that will be required, and a redevelopment proposal with essentially a desk review of the studies that have been done on the condition of the Stephen Palmer, and then a planning process, bringing together all of the stakeholders to determine what is the best use of that site or use of an adjusted site for that building. So this is a discussion only. We've recommended the Select Board, the school committee. I did ask the superintendent if the school committee wanted to participate. It is, it does revert back to them, as we've talked about, so we haven't heard back from them. Hopefully, we will before you vote on this. Planning Board, the FinCom, Council on Aging, Park and Recreation, and members at large, really depending on if the school committee's there, we want to make sure that we have a reasonable number, seven or nine. Hopefully, we can find folks who have experience in housing development or real estate development, so we haven't made a decision, none of the boards have made a decision on what should go there, so keeping that open. And I would note that for the boards, we have put a member or designee. Many of our boards are at the limit of how many members they have who can be on committees. I think we've created a record number of committees in the last couple of years. We should start on the D, funding some of the committees. And so just note that sometimes we use designees, sometimes we use representative. If you have an opinion, you can do one or the other. But we have, you know, the Planning Board, for instance, has a representative on large houses. Like, so they've used, people have used former members. We've done that, so I know that there's a lot of committees out there.
Excellent.
Any feedback either tonight or in the, between now and the next meeting? We'd be happy to.
Okay.
Yeah, particularly in a scenario where relevant experience or knowledge, it seems like it's so important. It'd be nice to have a designee who maybe is less encumbered and more knowledgeable.
Because this committee's gonna look at funding options as well. Is CPC an option, whether it's open space or housing, or would it be eligible for CPC funding?
It depends what it is. Yeah, it might be, yeah.
Well, and it's not clear that you would keep the buildings, which could change aspects of it as well.
Yeah. I think we have good, I think we have good staff, people, who can represent them, and, you know, we could bring them in if we need to. I think we're pretty far away from--
Yeah, not to change, yeah, not to change the composition, but just to think about that.
It is a large committee, nine.
Yes, we may be back down to seven by then.
Three-year appointment.
Just a few other items, consistent with the board's policy. Last week, I released executive session minutes from the meeting of September 11, 2023. We were notified by the town of Dover today that they got the go-ahead notice to proceed to design the Central Ave Center Street Bridge, which is very exciting. Just as a reminder, that moves it towards 25% design, which would then get it on the tip. We got $2.5 million in earmark, and MassBot is helping us fund some of the design costs. So that's just a really, really good project that's moving forward. And this weekend, after asking repeatedly, our Inspector General, Jeff Shapiro, went on a ride-along with Shane Mark and Sean Maloney and expressed great admiration for the work of Public Works in Plowings. So that was great. Anyone else who wants to get on the Plow, let us know for this time. That's all I have. Have you gotten to do that?
No.
Yes, I've had the opportunity. I haven't had the occasion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Kate, EO HLC? Has that been talked about in public? This is a critical one that I think you should be telling us.
This was on my list. I appreciate that very much. Yes, we were notified late Friday afternoon that the town has achieved interim compliance with the MBTA Community Housing Act, and that, as you know, was due the 13th, which is Thursday. So we had it in early enough that we had that, we received it last week. And, you know, we are proceeding. It's in the warrant. The Planning Board's hearing is Thursday, this Thursday night, and we will be moving towards the annual town meeting in May to achieve compliance, hopefully by July. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. All right. Tree Preservation Planning Committee Recommended Appointment. This is to discuss whether Oscar Mertz is to serve on the Tree Preservation Planning Committee. It was recommended by the Large House Review Study Committee to serve as his representative on the Tree Preservation Planning Committee. All right. Josh, last.
Also, Mr. Joe, I ask that this be its own agenda item, and this is just similar to my point from January 7. Our appointments are discretionary, and I don't want that our appointments to be construed in any way as political. And this particular person is a candidate in a contested race for the April election. I don't want it to appear that we are interfering at all in that election or taking sides in any way in that election. And I really do think that we should have a policy that really precludes us from making any nominations of any individual who is in a contested race during an election. So I'm going to oppose this on that basis. I think if we, if we get into the habit of making these types of appointments and making the appearance that our appointments are political, I think it degrades the credibility of our appointments and even risks degrading the credibility of elections.
This isn't the same situation as the prior appointment that you objected to, though? That person wasn't in a race of any kind?
We had an election on January 14, and so it was pertaining to an election.
That person, well, I mean, that is true, but this was an appointment, it was a missed appointment from well before town meeting. Wasn't, and this person wasn't a candidate. I'm just clarifying that there is a difference between this scenario--
Right, so one was a valid question, and this one is a candidate. That is the difference.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I think it's worth some discussion if we want to have a policy like that, like, off the bat. I don't know how I would feel about that, but I think it's worth some discussion. I would hesitate to apply it on this appointment without having the policy, because then I think it might actually look political, you know? So I think, or it might look somewhat arbitrary. So I would be open to discussing such a policy, you know, for the reasons that you said. But I would not want to start here in an ad hoc way.
You may.
So I understand that we are ultimately making an appointment, but this recommendation comes to us from the body that we asked for a recommendation from. That body that we asked was the Large House Review Study Committee. This is the person who they have recommended, who was willing to step up to do this work. I would not be inclined to reject a recommendation from a body that we've asked a recommendation, to provide us with a recommendation. So I think, as a practical matter, that is not a good thing for this board to be doing. I also would note that we constitute committees, at this point, all the time, right? If we had a cycle and said we were only going to constitute them once a year, they would not be happening anywhere near this particular point in time. This just happens to be a particular point in time. I would further note that if this person does carry through to be in the election, and if they were to be so elected, then we would need to be examining their service on a variety of committees. In the case of Large House, he wouldn't fit any of the slots anymore. So there would need to be an examination of his service in a variety of places, and whether he could continue in that service or not in light of a new role in town, which also happens. So, given all that, I would support the recommendation of the Large House Committee, and that we appoint him to do this work that he was willing to go do and that the town needs done.
Okay. Yeah, it's an interesting idea about a policy. I mean, we should think about that. But without a policy, there's a paradox that we're not judging Oscar Mertz on his political affiliations and his political activity. And I think that's political. I think the only metric is merit. And if he's capable and willing, that's fine. In this case, I would recommend that he be appointed. So that's why--
So just one, if there are other people who are up for appointments who are also candidates, I would be equally opposed to that. So it is not personal to this individual, it is the circumstances.
Yeah, I get that. I get, but the paradox is that it starts to appear, we're picking, like, if we are judging people on their political affiliations, and it's like, that's a different, that's a slippery slope, and that's slightly different. If we had a policy that said we were trying to avoid this, I could understand that he'd be proud of this policy. But right now, it seems like we're choosing, we're looking at this and we're considering to overturn this based on his political affiliations. So I think we recommend Oscar Mertz to the Tree Committee. Any other thoughts? Any more? Okay. Nothing? All right. Anyone wanting to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to appoint Oscar Mertz as the Large House Study Group Representative to the Tree Preservation Planning Committee for a term to expire on the 30th, 2026.
Second.
Good. Discussion? All right, let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. All right, next up. We have future Select Board Goals or Discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you for adding this to the agenda. The main thing was leaf blowers--
Yeah.
And noise regulations. I mean, I think they kind of go together--
Yeah.
But noise regulations in general apply to leaves and also to construction. And I think we have a lot of reasons to revisit our noise bylaw, and I would really like for this board to do that.
Okay. All right. So it's on the list. Everything goes on the list.
Is there, can I just ask, is there a reason? So we just had a goal, a review of our goals, right? I can't remember for sure, a month ago?
January, yeah.
Was it just a month ago that we did that?
December.
Okay. And in theory, we try not to add more goals until we get to the summer, when hopefully we can remove some things because they're accomplished, before we look at adding more things. So I was just trying to understand how we got here to be talking about future goals. Are we talking about putting this on the list to come back to in the summer?
That's what I understood.
Yeah.
Did you want to talk about it before then?
I don't know if we have time to do that.
Yeah, no, I understood it, like, as just a reminder, the board members, everything you send me, I put on the list. But, you know, if you want to do that in a meeting, that's--
So that's what I was gonna say. Board members do have an option to always write to Kate to say, add this to the list for the summer.
Right.
And now there's video proof. Go ahead and do that, and then we can all have a discussion, yes. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't adding new goals now in the middle of the year. That's what I was concerned about.
I don't imagine we have time to accomplish new goals before the end of the year.
Especially given the year we've had, where we're retreading on goals. But, yeah.
There are, you know, there, you know, in addition to leaf blowers, the--
MWR tunnel.
I'm sorry. Exactly. The MWR tunnel made me realize that our noise bylaws do not control that, because it is not permitted.
Yes, although theoretically, they said that they were below the noise decibel. I mean, I don't know if that's really, so.
We did have a public hearing on expanding the noise bylaw. I think Dan was chair? I can try to find that.
Yeah.
Didn't go for it.
Great. I had a resident who wanted snow, residential snow removal on the list, too. We can discuss snow in August.
Oh, and sidewalks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that, too.
Yeah. So, snow in August, okay. Anything else? Anything else? Okay. Next up, Town Manager Search Process for Discussion. This Friday, February 14, is a deadline for all applicants. Want to be a town manager, this is the time. Is there any other updates?
You're having the search committee meeting at the end of February, I think, the 24?
Yes.
And then the timeline calls for the consultant to forward the final candidate to you on the 18th of March. That would be an email.
Yeah. Okay. All right. And then, Committee Reports. Where do we have? Josh, can you talk about Stormwater Working Group?
Sure. We took a little bit of a detour, and we spoke about the Alderbrook Design.
Right.
So the town receives grant money to design in phases Alderbrook rehabilitation, so that there is less stormwater, less phosphorus running into Alderbrook, which in turn runs into Charles River, but will also hopefully remediate some of the flooding that has been going on in that area. It's, I believe, a six-phase project. It's huge. And we really only dove deep into Phase 1, which would be a reconfiguration of the Defazio Lot with, you know, rain garden and some contouring of the surface to channel water into the stream. This is, there's no identified funding for the construction, so this is just design. But, you know, to do the whole thing would be multi-millions of dollars. And there are multiple projects like this across town that we really would need to address for the purpose of stormwater remediation under our NIPD's permit, and also to make sure that there's less flooding in town. So it was a good, you know, primer to show the extent of the problem in Needham. Didn't directly relate to the bylaw, though. So we're continuing on with the bylaw revisions.
It gave good context. And by the way, we are way behind on phosphorus stuff. We're doing a Garp Park, but I thought we were doing well, but other cities and towns-- towns are doing well there. So we're getting there, but it is, it's.
We have more trees.
Right. Heavy lift. Okay. Anything else?
The Large House Committee met, circling around, figuring out what the strategy is gonna be. It's taking some time. The Tree Preservation Planning Committee is working on setting up its first meeting, now that the committee is complete, so that will be soon. And then I'm holding office hours here in select board chambers on February 19th, from 5:00 to 6:00. I already got a few appointments, so hope your time. Send me an email, or just show up.
Okay.
TCHOC met last night, and you all received a sort of annual letter that Katie has written. So I won't, you know, re-go over all of that, but we did have some interesting discussion with the NHA folks about kind of where they are, and I would say that some big developments. So on the Linden Chambers project, which town meeting voted, you know, conditional funding for, they have continued to move on. They were invited to submit a full application, which is due at the end of the month, so they're working towards that, so that is good news. On the less good news, the other, the other major project, the Seabeds Way and Captain Cook Drive, unfortunately, due to a lawsuit, HUD no longer offers, or this project is not eligible for the kind of project funding that it had hoped to have, which would have delinked the two projects. So because of that lawsuit, and because the preferred funding is not available, they are linked again, and Seabeds and Cook will have to actually start construction in order to free up these Faircloth units that will help finance Linden Street, which also means that they will have to compete for some scarce tax credit funding. So it's a bit of a complication. This is kind of what is leading to the larger request of CPA money, as well as the discussions about bonding. But that, those, those are all for the CPC to deal with. We, we in TCHOC are just waiting to see, you know, what CPC votes and what town meeting votes, and then we will oversee whatever it is. But those were, you know, some interesting, important developments. And meanwhile, if, for example, the CPC and then town meeting votes to fund the Charles River Center development, which would be for low-income developmentally disabled adults, should the town vote money on that, TCHOC would also oversee it.
Okay.
So the question, part of the question is, is there all that money existing? Right? That's a lot, a lot more than we saw a year ago. So Kate's sitting there shaking her head, yeah.
Not in cash.
Yeah.
So at some point, I imagine that we'll hear from Dave Davidson to.
Well, Dave will be providing input on many fronts, yes. Along with the conversation about that. It's really for the CPC to decide, you know, how they want to use their money and how much, and, you know, they don't have to provide the entire amount that people ask for, and, you know, they can, they don't have to do all of them. They're gonna have to make those hard decisions.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Heidi, I already reported on Large House, and the answer is my other committee meets tomorrow night. So at the next meeting, I will have an update on Quiet Zone, which I know people are anxious to hear about.
And that's not the library, it's the train tracks.
It's the train tracks. The whistles.
Yes, thank you. Okay. I enjoyed, was it community conversations, committee meeting about planning the next event for Conversations on Race that's coming up in spring sometime. I went to, of the envision Needham tours that were held, I went to three out of four of them. I can now feel my toes. It was really cold, but everyone should do it. You guys should all do the tour, walk through the tour, you can do it sort of virtually, or you walk through and do the A-frames, and you take the polls and you answer questions. It's a really great way to critically look at the downtown, because when you look at it like this, you look at this sidewalk, and they're really narrow, and they're really cluttered with, you know, a lot of stuff, and there's like, downtown looks a little beat up. And you should go take a look and see, like, there's real opportunity here to turn this, to invest in downtown. So please do it, everyone should do it. The MWR tunnel meeting, the committee meeting, went great. They brought the big guns, people asked a question, and you had some guy who had like a doctorate in financing talking about something for the state, and he gave the most, you know, perfect answers. And it went, I think everyone was really impressed. It's a great project, it's amazing. And finally, the groundhog saw his shadow, so we get winter for six more weeks, so I'm very happy. That's it.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask, for those who didn't do the tours this weekend, how does one, or when does one do that?
The sandwich boards are still up.
Yeah, so take your phone, and it's just a QR code, and you do the, on the A-frame, it gives you the route.
Where do you start?
At the core and the common.
Right over here at the alleyway towards the parking lot.
That's the last one. So you start.
It'll show you the route if you go by there.
Either one.
Isn't the route front to back, back to front?
Yep. Either side, north side, south side. Turns out the north side's really cold, and they didn't show them either, but it was, it's, really, you should see it.
So I'm just looking back at the article in News You Need Them last week. It feels like we should update that and send it out again to people to say, you can still participate virtually and tell them where to start.
And they're up until February 20.
Which is not, you know, it does need to flash the QR code. I think that could be helpful for people.
Yeah, and a lot of people had, a lot of, they were very clear, they have not, there isn't a plan. There isn't, like, here's what we're gonna do, is they want everyone's reaction. So this is, it's really helpful. And questions like, do you feel safe crossing this crosswalk? Turns out you don't, but it was really good to hear. So everyone should do it.
And the other survey that's opened is the RTS survey, so.
We have more than 1,600 responses.
Oh, good.
Have another week.
Okay.
Is it on the RTS sign to do the RTS survey?
Check.
Yeah.
We did do a postcard to every home.
Yes, I got it.
And actually, at the RTS, they have the QR codes posted at the RTS. I'll check them aside.
Okay.
Great.
So I could stay here all night.
Adjourn.
Second.
Discussion?
It's been a long year.
Being on the select board's an honor, so I hate to see these meetings come to an end. But, okay, all those who want to adjourn.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I wanted to get your cash, I'm so sorry.